No problem. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order, uh, March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four. At seven eleven Bloomfield Town Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, first item on the agenda is a motion to table. The minutes from our February twenty second meeting, there's still some work that needs to be done, so we'd like to table that till our next meeting. Their motion.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Abstention, chair votes aye. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a draft presentation for our planning and conservation development consultants.
I'm gonna promote, um. We have a lot of attendees.
I think Jonathan, when you're gonna speak, we're gonna have issues because you're gonna have feedbacks.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign off and come back on again.
Okay.
I think Jonathan, when you're gonna speak, we're gonna have issues because you're gonna have feedback.
Because I do have a brief presentation that will help guide us through. Our, our update. So if I can be promoted to a panelist, I was, I think I was just unmuted. But I need to be promoted to a panelist in order to do that. And, and once we do that, uh, uh, we could promote Marcy as well, that would be helpful.
I will promote her again, I was trying. It's almost there, my moment. Francisco, you're promoted.
Okay, now we're in business. Thank you, Linda. And I will share my screen, I'll get right to it, because I know we're a little delayed in getting started now, and, uh. So than- thank you, everyone, for making some time for us today. We want to provide you with an update as to where we are at in the process of developing. Your plan of conservation and development, um, as you're all aware, this effort's been going on for over a year now. Uh, you know, Marcy has been, is our project manager, and she's been at the forefront of this effort. Uh, I am, uh, our technical expert on developing these plans. And I've been at work now for the past few months along with the rest of our team and actually, uh. Taking all of the information we received from all the community engagement, all of the existing conditions research over the past year or so. And turning that into your plan of conservation and development. So I'm, I wanna walk you through where we're at in the process, what the plan looks like, and what the next steps are. Uh, so that's exactly what we'll do right here. Uh, so first, I'd like to talk about our timeline and the process. Uh, we are getting near the end, so we've, as I mentioned, we've gone through this more than a year effort of community visioning. Coordination with you and other, uh, other bodies, including council, community engagement, existing conditions work. We've been working on the plan for a few months now, and now we're getting ready to go into the adoption process. Uh, so we're getting very close to the end of this journey. The plan itself, uh, is really shaping up, I, it's, I think it's going to be a very usable document for you. Um, it's going to be something that is usable to you as a commission. Uh, usable, uh, to town staff, various departments, other boards and commissions, and to the public, uh, in general. Uh, the plan itself is organized around some very fundamental concepts or themes. Environmental resources, housing, economic development, transportation, facilities and services. Cultural resources, a future land use plan, which is a required component of a P O C D. And then finally, the implementation plan, you know, what are the priorities, what needs to be done? And, and to that effect, we've identified a close to forty specific strategies and over a hundred actions in support of those strategies. Identified, uh, what department, board, or commission should be responsible for seeing those through. And what the priority level of those are. Uh, so the plan is very action oriented, um. It's built around a common vision for Bloomfield, and we've, uh, at past meetings, I believe, have walked you through what that vision is. Uh, it, it's centered around a number of goals, uh, various goals for each of those major topic areas I just discussed. And it's comprised these strategies and actions that I just mentioned, so it's a very action oriented plan, it's not. A, a study, it's not a research document, it's a plan identifying the priorities for the community for policy. And actions across boards, commissions, and departments in the town. I, as I mentioned, we, we cover, uh, various topics. Uh, so each topic represents a, a section or a chapter of the plan. Uh, by example, in this case, natural resources. So we have narrative that explains what those resources are. Where some of the issues and needs are, we have maps, charts, diagrams that. Uh, help you understand where those resources are across the town. Um, and how things measure up, so we have about a hundred pages of this for you. Uh, housing, we took a look at housing trends, we went, uh, way above and beyond what the affordable housing plan did in taking a look at housing. We added data that was not included in that plan. And, and so we document housing trends and really what the key issues are for housing in the community. We do the same for economics and economic opportunity and growth in town. We take a look at various trends and metrics. And identify what the real strengths are and where the opportunities and needs are with respect to economic development in Bloomfield. We do the same for mobility, we take, took a look at the town's infrastructure. Um, we're looking through the lens of complete streets, the town has a complete streets policy, recently, uh, completed a complete streets plan. And so we, we've taken a look at the town's, uh, infrastructure and, and some of that is state roadway as well. And, and I've identified where, uh, where the areas of focus really should be with respect to mobility. Uh, and we've done the same for town facilities, you know, the, the town Bloomfield. Is, I think, has been in, at the forefront of planning for more sustainable development with the, the climate emergency plan. Energy plan that you have, so we're building upon that to identify. Uh, all of the town's facilities and where the investment should be made in facilities, and what type of investments those should be. And that builds upon fir- uh, work that we did, uh, more than ten years ago now, or about ten years ago. As part of the team that did the towns parks and recreation master plan. And, uh, finally, cultural resources, these are. Some of the things, the intangibles, we don't always think about when we're planning for our community. But these are the assets that really make Bloomfield the place it is, whether we're talking about. Uh, farms that have been around for a hundred or more years. Uh, important historic properties and landmarks, cemeteries, cultural institutions, these are all. Incredibly important to your identity, so we document them here in this plan. And we provide recommendations to strengthen the protection of those resources as well. Um, and then future land use, and we're still, this map is under development, uh, we were hoping to have it ready in time for tonight to include in the presentation, but it's still. Under development. And, but let me talk about what the future land use map, uh, is and the purpose of it. The future land use plan or map is a required component of your plan of conservation and development, the state requires you to have it. And it really, uh, asks us to take a look at how land should be used across the town in the future. Where the development should be concentrated, what areas should be preserved, along what corridors should growth occur. And the purpose of it is to provide a foundation. For your zoning, so that when you entertain amendments to the zoning, consider updates. You can refer back to the future land use plan to confirm that those recommend, recommended amendments are consistent with that vision. So it's a very important part, uh, of the plan. The implementation summary I talked about already. So the adoption process. This is where we're at, right now, so we, we are here. We are just about to enter into a required minimum sixty-five day review period. And that's required by the state. So our very next step is to deliver a draft of the plan to town council. And to CROG, Connected Capital Region Council of Governments, for those bodies to review the plan. Before we do that, we're gonna share it with you, and I'll, I'll talk about that schedule, us sharing it with you and, and what we expect, uh, from T P Z. So, the, the purpose of sharing the plan with council and CROG is that CROG is going to review the plan to ensure that it's consistent. With the capital region plan, with the regional plan, and we've already reviewed the regional plan to ensure consistency, so we believe that it is. Uh, so we don't expect, uh, any problems with that review. Um, council is, we are required to share it with council. It's really important that town council is on board and supportive of this plan, because they hold a lot of the authority, particularly the purse strings. For a lot of the recommendations of this plan. So while T P Z is the adopting body, you are the authority, you, the state has designated you with the authority. To write this plan and to adopt it. The state tells us that we need to share it with your legislative body, with town council in Bloomfield. And they need to get, be given an opportunity to review it and to provide comment. Now, you are not required to amend the plan per town council's comments. They could, uh, town council could even basically have a vote that they. Uh, don't approve of the plan, and they don't want it to go forward, and it really has no bearing on you, but it suggests that the plan won't be successful. So ideally, we share it with council. They provide us comment, and, um, if we think we need to make some changes to the, to the plan in response to their comments. We do so after coordination with, uh, town planning department, with Jonathan and with you, and we make those changes. And then council ideally would endorse the plan. But that has no real effective bearing on the plan's adoption. It, it's great to have them just to have a vote of endorsement. But that's more of a ceremonial thing that we could, we could say at our public hearing when we adopt the plan. So those are the next steps. Once that, once it's been shared with council, after thirty days from the point we share it with council and CROG. We can then post, uh, we can finalize the plan, make some adjustments. And then we file it with the town clerk and post it on the town website. At that point, we're sharing the plan with the public, with the entire community, and we're opening it up to public comment. Now, we have to be in that pu- public comment period for thirty-five days. And that affords the opportunity for the public to send emails, to write letters. Uh, just whatever communication is necessary to express their opinions about. How the plan should be or their support for the plan ideally. Then, we have the option of reconvening, uh, if we have a lot of pushback, if there are some really good ideas that come from the public. With respect to amending the plan. We have the option to then adjust the plan. If those changes are substantial, we should really then file another version with. With the town clerk and go through another thirty-five day review period. But if they're relatively small and surgical, that's acceptable. What we do is we then bring it to public hearing. We note that the public had some comments regarding the plan, we intend to adopt the plan with those changes. And, and then the plan is officially adopted, and as soon as you adopt it, it becomes effective. So, given where we're at in this process. We're in position to hold a public hearing as soon as the middle of June. And if we line things up with your regular meeting schedule, it could be June thirteenth. So if we work backwards from there with our mandatory review periods, that means by April ninth. We need to file the plan or deliver the plan to CROG and town council. Um, on our side of things, that works fine for our schedule with respect to development of the plan, we're in good shape. I think what's most important is that, uh, you have time to review it, so I wanna talk about that process. So following this schedule, if we think about our next steps. Our plan is to dri- uh, distribute a draft of the plan to you by April fourth. That gives an opportunity for, for us to go back and forth with town staff to tighten things up and make sure it's ready to share with you. So that's next Thursday, that's a week from today. Uh, we ask that you review the plan and provide us your preliminary comments no later than the following Monday. We know it's a tight turnaround, it's over a weekend, it's a few days, but here's what we need, and hear me out. We don't need you to review every line of it and every page of it. Uh, you have a full month to do that, you can, you have the full month to do that before we post the plan with the town clerk. Uh, what we're really interested in is make sure you get your eyes on the plan, and if there's anything initial that you feel we should address. Before we share it with council and CROG, then we can, we can make those adjustments before we share it out. But otherwise, you have a, a full month to absorb the plan, take it in. And provide us with any recommendations as to how we should amend it. Before we file it, um, with the town clerk, which is like six weeks from now. Does that make sense? I saw Kevin had his hand raised, uh, Kevin, probably good chance for you to speak up.
Um, true, you must sit here, is it okay?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Um, well, uh, Francisco, how, how much pages is the, is the plan?
It's about a hundred.
Right, so I, I honestly don't believe you're gonna give the commissioners five days to review this a hundred pages, listen, we, I understand that. You're saying it's a draft, right, but we are gonna be the adopting agency?
Correct, correct.
If anything gets to the council or CROG, we should have a full review of it with all of our potential comments. We don't wanna do it concurrently, because there may be stuff in there that we may not like, and it, it's. CROG has seen it, and council has seen it, and that's not gonna be a representation of us. So I think, we, we, you're gonna have to slow that down, give us an opportunity to do a full review with some more time. And then at that point, you can get, with, 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 with us, I don't wanna say adopting it, having a full. And a representation of T P Z, then you can then present that to council, and, and then you can present that to, um, CROG. Cause I honestly, I. That, that, the timeline doesn't work, because I'm pretty sure, and I'm sure some of my fellow counselors are gonna agree, we can't turn this over in four days, and. It's a representation of us, and I don't believe we should do it concurrently, because there might be stuff in there the council is seeing, and, and CROG is seeing, and we don't. That's not aligned with T P Z.
Okay.
So, uh, can I chime in as well? Um, I, I actually have a question, because we thought this might come up, and the one thing that we were wondering is. And we know you guys have a really, you have busy agendas, um, so if we did, you know, give you the full month and then we went out. That would push us back into July, which I, I know a lot of tap, communities skip July sometimes for meetings, or. And I'll add one more thing, you know, you have to adopt it, you know, that's technically, you know, the hearing. But we were also planning to do a public workshop out, you know, um, in the space so the public can come out, um, at. Close, you know, a few weeks before your meeting, so do you think July is a good time to do that, or we should just wait until the fall?
Well, I think your timeline is rushed, I don't know why, if it's, what's causing it, I mean, you don't, you don't have your future land use slide was blank. So I don't know how you're gonna get that filled out in four years, I don't even know why you put a blank slide on there. And one, uh, again, again, I'm just a little frustrated, because I see cog on one page, and I see CROG on one page, so I don't know. I, I feel like it's a little rushed for some reason, like, I see CROG here, C R, C O G.
CROG is, CROG is the cog, cog is the council of governments.
Right, so I wanna make sure that we have our acronyms right, so we're. Or cog, or both, or just the.
Yeah, so cog stands for Capital Region Council of Governments. But it is a cog, cog, CROG is a cog, so cog stands for council of governments. So what the state statute reads is council of government review period, C O G. Your cog is CROG, C R, C O G, okay? Just to distinguish between the two, yeah.
That's fine. Again, I'll have some other commissioners speak, but I think it's, it's a rushed timeline, and I think we need to put our full hands on it for the full review, and then before it gets to council and or, um. Anyone else?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I totally agree with, uh, Commissioner Hussain, that this looks very rushed. Um, I think we should be in position to say how long we need, how much time we need to prob- do a proper job. Of reviewing the plan that's being presented as the adopting, uh, commission. Also, the way this is pre- being presented, we're getting this information verbally. I don't know how much of that verbal information we're expected to retain. The, some of the documents that has been shown on screen, we can't even read most of them. So I think we need, it would be helpful if we can get some documentation in good time and have time to review them. Um, you did mention about, uh, community meetings. We need to know, uh, where, because you, up, you should have, uh, apparently you would have drawn your. Uh, influences from the community meetings. It would be helpful for us to know the summary of the input that community has had so far. And, um. So, again, um. These are the things I think we need to, uh, we need some documentation, need time to review them. And we need to be able to let, uh, known how much time we need to be able to do a proper job of reviewing this. Things like, uh, we need to know the defined vision, what is a vision for Bloomfield? That is, uh, being used to create this plan. So things like that would be, would be very, very helpful for us, in order for us to do our job. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Ina. Commissioner Goff.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll, uh, also echo the comments of my two colleagues, um. I, I certainly agree that we need to review this in some detail before it goes to anyone else, it is our document ultimately, uh, although. My other comment goes along with Commissioner Ina's, um, we are the adopting body, but it's the town's document, ultimately, this is the document that the town. Will live its next ten years by, and, um, you know, it's important that we do have a public vision of this. Uh, I've heard quite a bit of comment, uh, at other meetings, uh, uh, the presentation at the town council a few minutes, a few mi- months ago. Um, there is the feeling, there's a feeling by some that there has not been enough community outreach, um. And I know that's difficult, because it's always hard, you know, it's always hard to balance that in terms of. Trying to right, reach out and people not responding. I think it might be helpful at this point for the commission to review it, and then maybe have. Uh, you know, I don't know if we wanna have some kind of period where. There are public comments at this stage before we give our final comments to, to start that whole review process. It may speed it up at the end, in terms of not getting a lot of comments at the end and having to go back from public comment. Uh, to get some of those in now, um, so I, I, I think that, I think the main thing here is just to have a, you know, it, I will say. Based on what you were showing with the sections you have, and, you know, just the, um. Sort of the archetype of what those sections are going to, going to discuss, and the implementation at the end. I think it's headed in the right direction, um, I would like, I, I think categories you have and, um. You know, where it's going looks like you have a good way of organizing it, but I think we need to, um, at this point. Make sure that we get all that comment in before it starts that final review process, I think we'll make it quick. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate those comments, thank you.
Um, I was gonna say, oh.
John, is your hand up?
Yes, it is, I just. I don't wanna cut Renee off, I just would, would just note that the next, maybe, I'm not sure that's sufficient time, but maybe it is, but the. Next commission meeting is in three weeks, not four weeks, so we're scheduled to meet again on April, April eighteenth, um. Maybe that's a target for the initial commission review, and we begin to work off the bat date. Um, this, uh, the subsequent scheduled commission meeting after that would not be till late May. We obviously can schedule special meetings if that is, uh, of the, uh, whim, not the whim, but that is the wish. Of the commission, but our next regularly scheduled meeting is on April eighteen.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner James.
Well, yeah, uh, John made a lot of good points, um, I was gonna bring up the special meetings option in that, I, I do wanna. Like, appreciate them giving us this presentation and, um, pushing this work forward, because it is something that has been, um, needed to be pa- uh. Completed and updated for some time, so, um, while we do wanna do this right, um, and not rush it, we are kind of in a rush, so. Uh, uh, it's definitely a delicate balance where our, our team and, um, yeah, that's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Um, and I'd just like to comment on it too, and, um. I'd just like to say, I think the order is a little bit off, I think the T P Z should definitely have the first crack. And have more time than just four or five days before it becomes circulated through council and CROG. Uh, I think that would serve us best versus having us take a look at four days, go to council, go to CROG, and then come back to us. Um, at that point, I'm not sure how much modification can be made, or how much modification you would wanna make. But I think it should start with us and then get circulated around, so I, I, I agree with, uh, my prior colleagues on that. And that's what I had to say on that one. Anyone else?
Just had one quick follow-up, um, is there any, um, I don't know if the scope in, in, um, encourages it, but is any follow-up with D O T? About potentially, um, the rung abouts or anything else in terms of, um, I know you spoke of a complete streets, but anything else on any of the state roads? Francisco or Marcy?
No, no, we're not, we're not scoped for any direct outreach to D O T, other than the fact that we've reviewed, uh. All transportation plans for, for the town, and we've made recommendations for further coordination on state roads. Okay. Um, but no, no, uh, specific meetings with, or follow-up with D O T.
All right.
And as part of this work, at least, yeah.
Uh, Marcy.
Hi, uh, um, a couple of points, so, um, and I know it's probably been a little while since we came to you last, but I do wanna just. Know, um, I strongly encourage anyone to go to the Plan Bloomfield website, um, there's a few things on the project documents page there that will be really helpful. Someone mentioned the vision that we use to develop this, that was heavily vetted through, um, this group. And the public, and so that was part of our process, and in that document, it also talks about. Um, some of, some of the outreach that we've done, uh, when that was developed, so. And, and yes, um, I was the one who went to council, and I, I have heard, um, and I've gotten a lot of tips about. Um, resi- residential areas to reach out to, and we've been in contact with five different groups multiple times, and. I've got on one meeting so far, and I've even gotten people's cell phone numbers, um, so anything that any, I'm open to suggestions. We're going to Seaberry tomorrow, that is the only group that has gotten back to us, and this time. I'm hoping the third time's the charm, because they've already canceled twice, so I just haven't had luck with, um, the churches or some of the apartments. And, uh, um, living facilities, so, you know, i- it's not too late, you know, we can bring them the draft plan when it's out to the review. And instead of asking them to come, but we are interested, it's not for lack of trying, um. But some of that outreach is in that community visioning report, and the other thing that's online that's really worth checking out. If anyone missed the last meeting that we were at is the existing conditions report, that's a lot of the, the data, you know, what's out there now, you know. Related to these categories, so that will really bring you up to speed about what's out there now, um, and what we're wrapping up. Is that future condition stuff. Oh, I, I have one more thing, um, if, if you'll let me, um, I am heavily involved with the State Department of Transportation. As their on-call contract for all of their road safety audits and their safe routes to school programming audits, so. I'm, um, they're always looking for communities that are interested in having these, um, studies and participation done in. So I'm happy to speak offline with anyone about that, um, you can email John and he'll put you in touch with me, if you don't already have my email.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ina, and then I think we're gonna kinda wrap this up so we can move on. Uh, Commissioner Ina.
Yes, during the, your last, uh, presentation, I asked a question about the previous plan. The previous ten years plan. Um, I think the answer was that, um, it was, there was a decision to start, uh, afresh. I, I just want to pose that question again, why is there no reference or continuity with the previous ten-year plan?
Uh, I'm, yeah, I'm happy to respond to that, one, one of the first things. Uh, I'm, yeah, I'm happy to respond to that. One, one of the first things that we do is review the existing plan or previous plan in this case. Um, and and the purpose is it helps us understand uh. What the priorities of the community are based upon that plan. And I think you'll find that many of those recommendations. Will be carried forward in this plan because either they're still relevant, those recommended goals or strategies continue to be relevant. Or because those recommendations are both relevant and have not yet been accomplished or achieved. So I I think you'll find that there, if you compare the two plans that were carrying forward, uh some of what was proposed by the prior plan. But it'll it'll have a very new look and organization to it.
Will there be reference to the old plan though, to points of the old plan?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, but I I think what Marcy was getting at earlier is sometimes plans are updated, meaning. It's really the same document and you go through and you just change dates and you you check off things that were done and that's considered an update. Whereas we're, we're doing a comprehensive rewrite, we're developing a new plan. That is referencing some of the relevant content of the old plan, but it is really a new document.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, um. Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes, it is. And we appreciate your time and and I apologize if you felt rushed. I think we we were just eager to move this process along for you and and make sure you get to a point where you can adopt it. But it's certainly not our intention to blow by you by any means. So we will take the time necessary so that you have adequate time to review it. We we just want to be responsive to the project schedule and keep things moving forward. But we we will follow the, follow your lead on this and and we're happy to take more time as needed. So you can thoroughly review it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Be appreciated.
Sure, happy to do it.
Okay, um, if you can put screenshot.
Yes, I will do that right now and turn the meeting back over to you. Thanks. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a continuation of a public hearing.
Chairman?
Yes.
Two things, uh, do you want us on the agenda for April thirteenth?
Yes.
We use that as an initial target. And two, um. Would it be possible to take item six D out of order?
Oh, yes, yes, I, yes, I will.
Point of clarification, a point of clarification. Um, having it on April thirteenth.
Eighteenth, definitely.
Eighteen, sorry.
Eighteenth.
Uh, what what would be the, what would be the reason for the? Um, eighteen for providing our feedback when they give us the plans for us to review? Wha- wha- what's that on the agenda for?
Oh, go ahead.
Target with Kevin to get uh feedback than you are.
Right.
Because I mean, that's, if you think three weeks is sufficient to read the document and get preliminary. Then we can indicate back to the consultant, you know, sort of where our schedule is and how we feel about it.
So you're saying you want.
The document next week, Kev.
So we'll get a document next week, we'll provide feedback by April eighteen.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure. So provided that we get the document by April, what was that, fourth, they said? So it gives us two weeks. Yeah, or ten days or we have fourteen days, right?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Just wanted that clarification.
Okay, um, yes, uh, the town planner requested that we. Go to item six D before we reopen the public hearing. So item six D. Is under new business. And the application is uh. An existing restaurant liquor at seven, seven, two Park Avenue. I K O I seeking various live entertainment approval. Applicant Zilong Chen, owner. Levy Properties, comma LLC. Is there anyone here for that? Jonathan?
I sent out the link. I don't see him on um the list of attendees. Uh, basically, um. The owner of the business came in uh with an application for live entertainment. Um, they do have an existing restaurant liquor. Uh, they have received a special permit. Uh, prior to allow for a restaurant liquor, um, along with a floor plan. Um, and uh, they came in February sixteenth with um, an application to add live entertainment, which would include. Um, a DJ, a live band, uh. I think comedians, uh karaoke, um, and also sports events. Um, so with that, because they're uh, you know, adding on to the use. Um, for for live entertainment, um, the the special permit condition um. Stated that if there were any changes made in the nature of um, the special permit for the restaurant liquor. That uh it would have to go back to commission for um, for review and approval. Um, it also state that um, minor modifications to the use uh could also be. Um, granted, um, you know administratively. However, I'm not sure I'm here before the commission to see if. Um, you know, you would allow for an administrative approval if you uh. Actually believe that this is a minor modification and it's okay to have the live entertainment portion. They did submit a security plan. A noise mitigation plan and a floor plan, which has to be reviewed by the fire marshal and building official. Um, to ensure adequate occupancy whenever they're having events. Um, and they also submitted um, a list of a a detailed event. On on when they plan on having those events. Their hours of operation are not till twelve o'clock or one o'clock in the morning. Um, they are keeping their business open till about ten thirty um, at the latest. Um, with, I believe, on Friday and Saturday maybe open just a little bit later till eleven thirty. Um, but uh, he uh does not intend to have it open until one or two in the morning. As it's allowed by the state of Connecticut.
Thank you. Um, I just have a question for you on that. When will you get the approval from the fire marshal?
Um, well, as as soon as um the determination is made by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission that um, an administrative approval. Um, is appropriate and would be okay. Um, I would say wh- whenever the fire marshal is ready to approve it. I will send it to him right away. Um, just to ensure that uh there is, you know, proper. I guess whatever their code is for fire, it's not my expertise, but they do review it for uh fire code safety.
Okay, so basically Jonathan, we're, we're just giving you the authorization to do this administratively? And then you'll get back to us?
You're authorized, you're authorizing Linda as a zoning enforcement officer to give an administrative approval to this application, which we are comfortable with. And then um, we will, and that will just be added on to their special permit that they have already. The special permit letter said that if they did anything, they had to. Come back for review. Um, and it was either, it could be either an administrative approval or full approval by the commission. We felt in this instance that um administrative approval was sufficient. Uh, know that the next door neighbor restaurant also has all of this, this has approval to carry on the same act. Activities and has been doing so for some time. And uh, so this would, this, this, this restaurant would actually. Carrying on some of the same activities, but at a, at a lesser degree because their hours are not as, as expanded as the, as their next door neighbor.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Goff.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question on um, the co- that last comment by uh Planner Coleman. Um, the, the, so if we, we allow administrative approval of this, um. And and they decide a year from now that they want to change their hours to twelve thirty AM or something like that. Do they have to go back to the planning department for administrative approval of that change of hours? Or is the approval of allowing them to have live music, et cetera, uh, uh, does it all allow them to set their own hours on this?
Well, I'll let Linda, my, my interpretation counts, the commissioner is that they would need to get a secret rule from us for. For any modification in our security plan or any of that type.
Thank you.
Okay, um, does any other commissioners have any issues with that?
Um, Mr. Chair, this is uh, you know, Commissioner Bowden, I just have a question for uh, um, for. You, you referenced a security plan. Um, what security measures are they looking to, to, to enforce considering that they're gonna be. Could having live music and entertainment um concurrent with um Elizabeth next door.
Security measure.
Bouncers?
Well, uh, it entails um a commercial grade security cameras on site. Um. It also entails adequate um employees uh for nights where they will have events. Um.
I, I, I guess my concern is you have Elizabeth there who, you know, has entertainment and live entertainment, which is fine. Have another you adjacent having live entertainment and 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 parties or what have you. You're gonna have a lot of people there. Obviously, the fire marshal has to um weigh in on um, the maximum occupancy, et cetera. But I I am concerned about incidents occurring at the police station right across the street, you know, but we've had. You know, serious issues in the past um at the location and I just wanna with, with. The increase in occupancy and 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 people. I I just, I don't think, you know, one or two bouncers is gonna be sufficient and you have two, two venues there that are gonna be packed to capacity.
And that's understandable. Um, so as part of the administrative approval, um, I, I. Can also uh put conditions on this as to uh security wise to ensure that um. In the case that there will, if there are incidents of concern, of safety concern, um, it would allow. You know, uh. For me to make recommendations uh to the police department or to to ICQ, um, to to even hire a police officer if needed. I'm not sure if the town has that capacity um for that kind of private job. Or we can come back in a year and reevaluate for safety concerns, the town plan and zoning, it can come back to you. Um, you know, for. Uh, I I guess just for reconsideration and and see if, you know, the live entertainment is still appropriate.
That has.
If it's a safety concern, it can definitely come back if there are sufficient on. Uh, calls for order that is of safety concern, uh, it it can definitely come back to the commission.
Has, has Chief Wade in?
Say again?
Has the, the chief of police weighed in and any input as to whether or not he has any concerns or not about that particular venue and location?
I've had one conversation with him and he did not express any concerns.
Okay, thank you very much.
Also, the um, the other organization that keeps a close watch on him is the Liquor Control Commission. And if any, anything adverse begins there, they run the risk of their liquor permit being pulled rather rapidly.
It's, 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 it's just, it's the, the opportunity for violence or any type of um. Scenario to um unfold that could be catastrophic and fatal, so to make sure that, you know, we, we have. Individuals there that are able to address those types of concerns. You're gonna have a lot of people over there. Maybe exceed, you know, the maximum occupancy set forth by the fire marshal. So just want to make sure the eyes are on it. But thank you, you guys could both answer my questions. Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ola, then Commissioner James, then Commissioner Peters.
This, I have a question about the uh ten PM that has been disclosed. Um, I think you said that um, it's been said that um. The such uh businesses are allowed to stay open till. Is twelve or one P, one AM. So where did the ten PM come from? Is that in, would that come from a rule or regulation?
No, it just came from um, what, what he wanted those hours of operation to be. The state of Connecticut would allow them to be open to one in the morning. Um, he just didn't want to go past a certain time.
Okay, so there is no limitation on them being able to go until one AM if they want to?
Um, not, I I believe the state of Connecticut regulates the hours for a restaurant liquor. Um, as far as, you know, even for restaurants serving food after a certain amount of time. Um, but I believe on Monday through Thursday, um, it's, it's until, I want to say it's until midnight. Um, Fridays, Saturdays are more uh till about one in the morning. If I'm not mistaken, it might have changed it to two, but um, I don't believe that that is their intention to be open so late.
So, so they, they, so they don't have to come back and apply if they, if you want to go to the allowed one AM. They don't have to come back and apply.
Yeah.
Or submit another application for that.
He would have to inform. Cause he, he, he gave us, Commissioner, he gave us specific hours of operation. Monday through Thursday, eleven thirty to nine AM to nine thirty PM. Friday and Saturday, eleven AM to twelve AM, twelve PM rather. Twelve PM to nine thirty PM. Those are the hours that he's formally given to us that he wants to operate. If he changes those hours, particularly on the hour, on the upper end, he's gonna have to come back and in, and inform us.
Okay, so they, they know that they have to come back to, if they want to take advantage of the provided uh time limit.
We will so inform them.
They will inform us, we will inform the police department as part of, you know, for any liquor, we normally. Look forward the hours of operation.
All right, uh, thank you, Commissioner Ina. Uh, Commissioner James. And then Commissioner Peters.
All right, um, their uh Department of Consumer Protection uh application has sporting events box checked off. And I guess I'm just curious, like what sporting events might they do or like, maybe we, I I just don't. Maybe they just did it to be thorough, but I couldn't imagine them doing any sporting events.
I think it was, yeah, that's a good question. So I asked the same question and his um. A thought of sporting event is having uh the, you know, sports on the TV whenever there was a major game. Um, I did indicate to him that that was not considered a sporting event. Um, so he was going to consider uh unchecking that, but in order to do that, he has to give me a new form. Um, but he did not, so I still have the old form and that, that is what was presented to you. But I believe that he intends to bring in a new form with that one particularly untouched.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Peters. Uh, I think you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, I had some difficulty unmuting. Um, so my question, I mean, they, they can't really answer this, um, you're not here, but. This plan kind of seems like a plan that's just in consideration of a karaoke or maybe a bar night. So my question really is to um, this bar, the bar area, this is, is, is there gonna be like a re uh seating? Plan or something that's gonna, you know, um, consider the actual. Actual days of operation that doesn't consider these events because this is, there's just this big open space, which now I'm in um, a little bit of um. Concern to the occupancy lows that may occur within this space. How are we, how are we accounting for this? How are we actually seating these individuals that are gonna be attending these events? What is the space gonna be used for? I understand that there's a, there's an area for the band or maybe a karaoke spot. But what is this other large portion gonna be uh dictated as, is that standing only? It, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, I can share a screen. They did submit a floor plan. Uh, the commission did perceive it. Um. Uh, they have an area where they indicate that the DJ booth will be in the bar area. They are removing two uh booths that. I think the seating capacity for those booths were four to six. Um, and two of the, the booths would. They would remove, so about anywhere between eight to twelve um seating capacity would be removed from the bar area. Um, and that is all that they intended to remove. Um, in the bar, they do. Um, in the bar, they do show an open space, um. And so that, that, it, it was part of their, of restaurant plan, so that didn't change, so the only thing really that. They're removing our two booths in order to have a corner for their live band and or, um. A D J booth area.
Okay, understood, but still around that, um, the bar area on that plan. Are there gonna be like, uh, I guess tall tables with stools, or is that just gonna be standing only, what it? What's the purpose with that area, is this gonna be like a dance floor? It's, it's, it's wide open, and I don't imagine that, that's gonna be wide open all the time. Because as they indicated in this application, these events would only occur on a Thursday and a Friday, um, regularly, that's what it, that's what it seems like. Um, so the rest of the, uh, the rest of the five days of, of the week, what is that space gonna be, what is it gonna look like?
Um, the open space will remain, uh, from my understanding from the floor plans that, uh, they have submitted to the. For their restaurant, um. Not much is gonna change beside that corner, so there, there, the plan for the restaurant was almost similar to the plan. For, um, whenever they're having live entertainment, is where I'm getting at. I understand your concern about, you know, the open floor, um, and it being utilized as a dance floor, um.
Yeah, cause open, open floor assembly or, um, with no fixed seating or anything like that, it's, it's a lot different occupancy wise. Than a fixed seating, so that could pack in a lot of more, a lot more bodies, and that, that whole count increases drastically, so.
That's correct, and that is when the fire marshal and building officials come in to look at that capacity. And, um, based on that, uh, they will make their building code suggestions or changes if needed.
Okay, just, just wanted to call that out, just to make sure it's in, in consideration.
Thank you.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, we just, uh, if the commission is comfortable, if they could just. Do a simple, um, resolution authorizing the zoning enforcement officer to, um, to, uh, administrative. Um, approval of this application.
All right, I'll move that the existing restaurant, um, liquor, the restaurant liquor at, um. I mean, that's, that's red leg, that way is red, existing restaurant liquor at seven, seven, two Park Ave. IQI seeking various live entertainment approval can be enforced by our, um. Zoning enforcement officer and behead administratively for approval.
I'll second that. Excellent, it's been moved in second, any further discussion? Oh, yes, Commissioner Ina. You're muted.
I just want to, you know, since they, they already have. The, the state already allows them, uh, such businesses to open up till one A M. I think they should have that, this, I don't see the reason to restrict them to ten o'clock, even though that comes up.
Commissioner Ina, I don't think we're restricting them, that's their hours of operation, they chose those hours.
But, uh, I think, um, it's been said now that they have to come back and apply. Again, if they want to take advantage of the provision of the law to be able to go to one A M. They shouldn't have to come back and apply again, since the law grants them that already. I, I was trying to understand what, why.
Unfortunately, that, that is the way they have to proceed. If we approve it at this specific, at, at this particular hours. In order for that to change, they would have to come back before us. So, so in other words, no one could say we're gonna open from six to nine, and then next thing you know, they're open to two o'clock. Uh, it has to be specific to what we approve, and anything outside of that, any modifications have to come back before us. Or to get reapproved. So actually, this is fine, uh, if this is what they want to ten thirty, well, I mean, we, we can't force them to go to one. Uh, further discussion, Commissioner Goff.
Yeah, just the clarification, Mr. Chair, um, I agree with what, I, I. Basically agree every, with everything you just said, I just want a clarification. Would they have to come back before the commission, or would they, if we are granting administrative approval for this process? Would they just have to go in and get an administrative approval if they wanted to change their hours?
Well, they might would start there, but I think they would still have to present that before us.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Peters, are your hands still up from before, or this is new?
Sorry, you can always bring them before, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, are there any further discussions on the, the approval of the, uh, the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Abstention, chair votes aye.
This is a point of clarification, uh, since you, since you went to new business, six, I think it was six D, six D, sorry. I believe six A has already been covered too, correct?
Yes.
That's just an error that.
Yeah, six A was in oversight.
Okay. All right, so, so six A and D are done, okay, thanks.
Yes, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a continuation of a public hear, a public hearing. Which, uh, Secretary, would you like to read that, it's not a legal notice requirement, it's just a continuation? And that's in four A?
Absolutely, it is, um, a public hearing four A for a zone map change application at three nine one Simsbury Road. From an R forty residential district, R forty to a planned luxury resident district P L R. For added development to an existing master plan, applicant owner is Rehoboth Court LLC.
Okay, the chair entertained the motion to reopen this application.
It's removed.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstention, chair votes aye. Okay, John, who's here for that?
I did promote, uh, two individuals, Greg and James, uh, that are here on this application. I'm not sure why Greg isn't on.
Um, good evening, for the record, my name's Jim Cassidy with the engineering firm of Halcy Pearson and Cassidy. Here tonight representing Rehoboth Development, um, for, uh, the proposed zone change of property at three ninety one Simsbury Road. And also a modification to a master plan that was, uh, previously approved for seventeen Watkins Road, if it's okay, I'd like to share my screen.
Yes, please.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
So last month, we were before you, at that time, we presented our application for the zone change, again, a property at three ninety one Simsbury Road. Uh, this is an arrow photo, uh, that I have up on the screen, so up on the top is Watkins Road. Off on the right or to the east is Simsbury Road. Um, the property is outlined in yellow, total property area consists of about five one, five point one acres. Of, um, of, um, I'm sorry, R forty residential zone land. Uh, off to the west of that, uh, is seventeen of Watkins along with twenty one R Watkins. And also nineteen, uh, Overbrook, uh, Farm Road, um, consisting in total area of about eight point two, three acres. Um, the, if I look at your existing zoning map, um, the areas highlighted in blue. Are the existing P L R zones, uh, within the town. Um, so the area towards the center of this map, uh, is the property of seventeen twenty one R. Uh, Watkins and also nineteen Overbrook Farm Road, uh, this was part of a previous zone change and master plan approval, uh, that occurred. Um, by Peter Stitch Suchus back in two thousand seventeen. My client has purchased, uh, that development in addition to, has purchased the industrial five point one acres of R forty zone land. That's directly adjacent to that property just to the east, outlined in red on this map, so once again, Watkins is to the top. Simsbury Road is off on the right hand side, uh, existing property is R forty, uh, we're looking to change its zone, uh, to a P L Rs. Plan luxury residential zone, on the bottom, uh, the next P L R currently is Still Mountain Estates. And then off to the west is, uh, Belbre Estates, uh, on the other side of Mountain Road. This was the prior plan that was approved, um, for the seventeen twenty one R Watkins and the nineteen, um. Overbrook Farms Estates consisting of a total of eighteen units. Duplex style units on this plan, Watkins is on the top, uh, with a fifty foot accessway into the property, uh, that will provide a, a loop. Servicing nine buildings, uh, duplex buildings for a total of eighteen units. Uh, at, at the last time we were before you, we were actually proposing to do is change the zone on the area I have highlighted in gray on this plan. So it's only half of the property located at three ninety one, uh, Simsbury Road for a total area. Of zone change of two point five, five acres. We are proposing to leave the remaining two point five, four acres, uh, zone R forty residential. Uh, that seemed to be a bit of concern of staff and also members of the commission, uh, that what was going to happen with remaining property. Uh, the plan, this is a, this is a highlighted copy of the zoning map, again, the area in gray was the area that we're looking at changing last time. Um, this was the concept master plan that we pro, provided to you. The master plan, uh, consisted of a total of thirty four single families, so we weren't doing duplexes, we were doing single family houses. Similar road configuration, all those coming off the center of the combined properties, uh, a boulevarded road coming in into a loop. Providing frontage for the thirty four units along that roadway. This plan, there was a bit of a concern at that time also about the separation distance between the buildings. Uh, in particular, uh, where you see two garage units, uh, two of these smaller rectangles butt, butting against each other. Uh, the separation distance was a minimum of, of, um, ten feet. Uh, there was concern about the closest and also the constructability of that, uh, and then again, what's going to happen with this remaining land. Uh, we took into consideration, uh, the, the commission's concerns. Uh, I'll note that this was the zoning table for the prior application, uh, based upon the total area of development. Was ten point seven nine, based upon the thirty four units, we were looking at a density of three point one four, or one point five dwelling units per acre. Which is under the requirement for the P L R of four dwelling units per acre. We went back, uh, we submitted revised plans, we met with staff, and what we've agreed to do, or propose to do at this point. Is we're looking to do a zone change of the entire piece, uh, three ninety one Simsbury Road, so now the entire piece highlighting graded be, be changed. Uh, it's five point nine nine acres, whereas the overall development area for the master plan previously was going to be ten point seven nine. Now we're looking at a total of thirteen point, uh, three, three units. Here again, oop, sorry, here again is the updated master plan, um, so now the entire area in gray is the area that's gonna be included in the P L R zone. Um, so there's no remaining portion, there's no unsurety of what's gonna happen to that remaining property. In addition to, as part of that, we went back through the master plan, uh, and we reoriented, oriented things, we've kinda reconfigured the road orientation. And now that we are using the entire property as the o, overall development for the, uh, zone change in the master plan. Uh, we kinda reshaked out the units, uh, what we've done is we've actually, uh, expanded the separation distance between units. So now at this point, we're looking at having about twenty feet between each one, the dwelling units compared to the ten feet that was originally proposed. Uh, the still the same, uh, single family proposal, uh, with a two car garage and a two car parking space for a driveway in front of them. Because we have this additional area, um, we're looking at doing, um, a stub road off. Towards the, uh, the portion of property we were not previously using, and doing that, we are proposing a total of thirty five units at this point. Zoom back one screen. Um, so in looking at the zoning data, again, um, when you take a look at the maximum density, um. With the additional land area and the additional unit, uh, we're at a total of two point six two dwelling units per acre. So we're still far under the four dwelling units per acre. So, uh, just a little bit of history as to how we kinda got to where we are with the plan that's proposed. Initially, when we looked at this development, uh, we were looking at doing duplexes, uh, the developer has a similar type development on the other side of town. Uh, that's a P L R zone, uh, we looked at using a similar type of unit where it's duplex, uh, with a width of about twenty feet, by about fifty feet deep. Uh, and in doing that, using that type of unit, um, we were basically looking at having, cause it's a much smaller unit. Uh, we were looking at having a total of fifty three units, similar road configuration, but a total of fifty three units. At fifty three units, that put us at a, uh, maximum density right at the four units per acre. If I take the fifty three divided by the thirteen point three six, it puts us at about four units per acre. And looking at and talking to the town, we understand, uh, you plan a conservation and development, it talks about having a lower density development in this area of town. Um, so we tried to accommodate that, uh, by, again, separating the buildings. Although it, it says lower density with either single family duplex and triplexes. Uh, we are looking at doing s, single family as, uh, single units, uh, and again, at, at lower density, the two point six two acres. This is a picture of, uh, some of the units in Still Mountain Estates, uh, again, this is the development is just to the south of this, one basically separated by one property to the south. Um, this, these units are gonna be similar in size, similar in separation, uh, it's about twenty foot separation distance between the units. Similar in distance off the road, so we're doing something that we're trying to complement what they've done over in Still Mountain, uh, to make it very similar. Along with same thing on the front entrance, uh, looking at having that type of boulevarded road entrance as you come into it. Um, to give it the same kind of presence as we have at Still Mountain Estates. Uh, I'll note, um, that we did, uh, receive, uh, some comments from staff today. Uh, in particular, uh, I received some comments from engineering, uh, and really did not have a, a lot, a lot of time to reply to them. Um, but I, I basically, it's like, I don't wanna go through each individual comments, cause when I read through the comments, a lot of them deal with. The next phase, when we go into the site plan phase, like providing the appropriate utilities. Uh, determination of how the grading is gonna work and all that kinda stuff, and other, other aspects that need to be added to the plan. But I don't know if the commission received this report, but the one I kinda take exception to, um, is under. Uh, Peter Castelli's comment number six, and I'll, I'll read it and I'll show you my position that, right after I'm done, done reading it. It says the density approved, the eighteen unit development on eight point two, three acres is eight, or sorry, two point two units per acre. The present proposal will add five point oh one acres of P L R zone. And include thirty five units for a density of two point six two units per acre. Proposed density of the proposed two point two units per acre was deemed to be suitable for the neighborhood. And is recommended to be the density applied for proposal for maximum twenty nine units. I'll start off by saying. A lot of taking a look at density deals with restrictions on the property, and I'll put it in this context. In particular, the particular, or the, the original piece of property that was developed, or proposed to be developed and approved. Is about eight point three acres. If I take a look at that property and just say that there was on that eight point two, three acres, only seven acres. That was wetlands, leaving me about one acre to develop, there were never been eighteen units on that property, there's no way they would ever fit. In this particular case, and this map I have up is a highlighted version of, of the existing condition survey, and my purpose for showing this. Is that I'll start with the existing property. The existing approved property, so the property I have highlighted in purple on this plan, uh, first of all, this is Watkins on the top. Uh, you can see this existing house here, and this is seventeen Watkins, there's another piece of property here, that's twenty one R Watkins. And then this remaining piece on the back is, uh, nineteen Overbrook Farms. The total area of the property, again, was eight point two, three, eight acres that the application was applied under. There are severe restrictions on that property, particularly on the entire south end, uh, there's an area of wetlands. Now, if I take a look at the area I have highlighted in blue, which includes the wetlands, but also includes areas that are basically cut off due to wetlands. Uh, that area is three point oh one acres. In addition to, access to the property is through a fifty foot wide access strip. That you cannot build anything other than a driveway on, and that area consists of two point four, or point two four acres. If I take a look of the total acreage and subtract the three point oh one wetlands that I can't build on, and I subtract the right away that I can't build on. It actually works out to about four point nine eight acres of, we'll call it usable or, or buildable land. If you take a look at that usable land based upon the eighteen units that was originally approved, um. Uh you really only have a density based upon usable or buildable land, about three point six one units per acre. If we now move over to the additional property that we have purchased, it's five point one acres. Uh the area highlighted in blue is Tumble Down Brook. Uh in addition to the wetlands associated with Tumble Down Brook. I've also included the area between the wetlands and Simsbury Road, because it's really not accessible, so it's not really usable area. So I'm deducting that also, that area works out to point six four acres. Uh if we subtract that from the five point one, I have a y- a net buildable area or usable area of four point four six acres. If I were to take the four point four six acres. Multiply it by the same density of buildable acreage for the existing development, it works out to sixteen point one units. So if I take the eighteen plus the sixteen point one, it puts us at about thirty-four units per thirty-five units per acre. So we are very similar in density based upon actual usable area. Again, I equate it back to if you had a larger piece of property and ninety percent of it was nonusable, you would never have that many units on it. I think the I think the density should be controlled by the uh restrictions on the property, the the things you cannot develop. Uh rather than the overall property area. I think that one of the attentions of the uh PLR zone is to preserve uh such natural resources as these wetlands. So this area in blue was being preserved uh by the original development. This area in blue uh and part of the upland review area on this uh application would also be prefer uh preserved as part of this development. In addition to, uh if you take a look at the peculiar shape of the property in purple, uh again, it's kind of more of an L shape. If anyone has uh dealt with develop the land development before. Square rectangle shapes work a lot better for development, L shapes are difficult to develop, uh ultimately um having one big square contiguous piece of property. That's a lot more conducive to development. But overall, if you look at, again, I'll iterate, if you look at the usable area, uh we're at very similar density to what was previously approved. So uh what we're seeking again is to do something similar uh to Still Mountain Estates. Um this is the proposed master plan layout that we'd like to go with, uh it's for single family houses. Minimum separation distance or you know average separated addition this of twenty feet per unit similar to the Still Mountain Estates. And then a density similar to what was approved uh as part of the original application. So with that, I'm going to conclude my presentation and hopefully answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Uh Jonathan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, Mr. Cassidy got way ahead of himself. Uh this was um continuation of the hearing just on the map change. He also got into obviously very detailed um. On four B, which is the special permit um. For the uh for the master plan, um. I would suggest that we not redo it all, but I think we need to understand that in essence. Uh Mr. Cassidy covered both A and B. In his presentation, whereas the call was only for A. At this point. We did not combine them, but he did.
Okay, thanks for pointing that out.
Secondly, from from a map change point of view. The staff supports the amended proposal. We did have uh concerns about the uh about the split lots, and we think that the uh proposed um. Zone change to include the entire property in PLR is appropriate and um and we would support it. Uh if you wish, Mr. Chairman, I can move on to our comments on. On the special permit side, um. I think um we'll come back to you for site plan approval and a and a variety of the uh. Items that are that are raised uh in both our. Report and in and in the town engineer slash town engineers report, I think it's important to understand. That in this capacity on this particular proposal. Mr. Castaldi was acting as the town engineer, because. John DC retired as of of March eight and. And the assistant town engineer is on maternity leave, and therefore Peter is in essence the acting town engineer. And in that capacity, we have never restricted the comments that may be wanted to be made by the engineer. Um so um as far as I'm concerned. If Peter, uh the town engineer wants to comment on. Uh zoning related activities, we welcome their comments. The commission obviously um can make their own decisions, but I think they benefit from as many comments as they get. The PLR this allows or requires that the commission set. The density. This on the plan of conservation and development, this is designated as a low density residential area. In the original. Uh PLR approval, the commission set the density at two point two. They're proposing a density of two point six six. Um from our perspective, that's not in inappropriate density. But I think the commission needs to recognize that it is an increase from the density, no matter how you cut it and design it and. And and want to describe the various configurations of the lot. The PLR right now requires that you you are conditions, you you base it on the entire property. Um and that's what the regulations say, and that's what you should be guided by. And so from the staff's perspective, we're not uncomfortable with two point. Uh six six um two two point six two. Uh but we would note that the present designation is two point two. And the commission will have to decide if they want to continue that or if they want to allow the increase with the two point six. That would be the the summary of our comments on. On both the zone change and the master plan as presented, obviously, when it comes back for site plan. Uh my application will have additional.
All right, uh for clarification, Jonathan, the fact that we discussed both of these in one, you commented on both. He pretty much presented on both. How would we be voting on this?
My sense is you should vote on them individually.
Okay.
That you should approve the map chain. And then approve um the the amendment to the master plan. And I would do it separately.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, um before we get into any questions or anything like that from the audience, because this is a public hearing, I just want to go over. Our method and how we conduct our public hearings for anyone out there that this is their first time. Uh we first hear a presentation from the applicant, we didn't have comments from our director. We didn't take questions from the audience, we take questions from the commission. We'll didn't have comments from the audience, we'll take comments from the commission. Um and at that point, we'll give the applicant a last chance for any uh closing remarks regarding the application. So at this time, is there anyone out there in the audience that have any questions regarding this application?
Yes, there is, um Adrian Miles, and he is being promoted.
Thank you.
Promoted amongst her.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good evening, good evening, committee chair, good meeting, good evening, committee, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. Um I know that Mr. Cassidy um did address two. Um basically two applications and one to, you know, this conversation on the table as to how they're going to be addressed, but there was a lot of stuff. That basically came out in the in the presentation. And therefore, I'm not really sure how to exactly approach my questions, but I I think I'll. Probably be more comfortable just le- le- laying it all out on the table. Um. So I know some questions came up regarding the density, and that was actually one of my questions as well. And we talked about uh the initial. Um plan that was approved back then, and if I were to call it in the Peter Stitch days. And as as the uh engineer, Mr. Cassidy did rightfully pointed out that. There were several flaws within that application in itself, and 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 I guess. For lack of a better description, some misrepresentation as to the density as it relates to what's usable land and what's not usable land. And cut and put in the entire lot into one equation and then determining based on the amount of. Um uh properties that were proposed to then determine that this is the amount of usable space, and in truth and in fact, it is not. Just because some of the land was just not usable, so I'm glad that that was pointed out. Some of my concerns though with regards to whether it's a a zone change or the or the plot change or or the amount of units. Is that I think that we should really start to address this as as though it's coming to the table for the first time in that. Uh almost everyone, I believe, on this committee hasn't been around that long to even. Was part of the first propos- um the the first recognized uh plan. And back in the Peter Stitch's day, so now we're looking to adopt some principles of that plan. To bring it into this new plan, to to squash the old plan, basically create a new plan. But still keep the the name of the old plan in place, and I think that. All of that uh back and forth manipulation of the of the initial plan in itself, I think leaves a lot of. Open doors for misunderstanding and misclarification, and I think that really and truly. Um we should, this this project should be approached as a brand new project and with brand new specifications. According to today's day um times and expectations. Um. I recently, I as you, as everyone. Probably see, I guess most of us or all of us are probably uh Bloomfield residents. With a very small amount of water that's fallen within the last couple of uh. Couple of days or weeks or so, we all see that that the 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 land is very full. The water isn't going anywhere, isn't drifting away any further, any faster. The brook, as the street is named after, Overbrook, is full, it's full, or it's almost overflowing in the. In the area of Watkins to Overbrook Farm Road, that's that area in itself is 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 overflowed. I mean, I live here, so I see this stuff often. So I'm wondering, one of my questions would be, did the engineer, have you done any hydrostatic pressure testing of the ground water? To see really and truly what effect it's going to have. When the land is cut up and now the water is redirected, the water, you know, in a traditional manner would have. Led directly towards the uh the the brook. Now that water, if it's going to be led there, you know. How is it going to flow? So that's one of my concerns, because even with our land in itself, very little water, the um. The ground is 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 immediately flooded. I also noticed on your plan, um the lot number nineteen, lot number twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three, those particular lots. I'm not sure if you've walked a property recently, even if you walked it even tomorrow, you'll see that that particular. Um tho- the backyard of those particular properties are in the direct path of water that leads directly to the brook. So to build a property and to propose that, those plots as being part of their backyard. To me, that's that is directly interrupting the direct flow of the water. Leading from the ground down to the brook, so that's, you know, that's one of my concerns, one of my questions, um. And basically, the plan, this new plan is to take four parcels of land. And combine it into one giant parcel with one egress in and out, and that's on Watkins, so we're proposing to turn. Uh this entire property into one project and with, I I I'm I I'm kind of lost now as far as how many. I think you're looking at fifty-four properties, I could be, I could be wrong. But now you're putting all of those properties uh and all that, all those residents, everyone out onto. Uh Watkins, which in itself, as we addressed and talked about in the last meeting, that the interstate in itself are. Uh the main highway there, yeah, that that in itself is very difficult to come out from Overbrook, it's very difficult to come out from Watkins. And then to increase the traffic flow now by so many, I think. Creates kind of a a a very dangerous situation, so I'm wondering.
M- Mr. Mount?
Yes.
This is the question portion, so if you have any like direct questions.
Yeah, and I.
That. That would be appreciated.
Right, so Mr. Chairman, I do I do uh respect that, that's why I also in the beginning of my conversation states both. Of the proposals were laid out into one conversation, I was very confused as to. How we're going to address this, and I really didn't want to miss an opportunity not to speak on both of them, so. Uh you know, I apologize for that.
Oh, no, 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 no problem, but any direct questions, you can ask any direct questions on both of them. But not necessarily the comment and question.
Okay, all right, so so with my. Okay, so one of my questions would be for lot nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three, have you studied the water path? Of the particular water flowing from the back of that yard down to the stream, that's a question. Another question is, have you done any hydrostatic pressure testing of the groundwater in the area of. All that you're going to develop to really get a sense of. How this, how much pressure, how much water is in the ground, and where is that water going to go after the land is disturbed? That's another question, um. My, I have another question uh pertaining to the the property. The other development that the that the engineer did reference, and I believe is the Maribel project, it used to be called probably the Rehover project. Or Rehover, and I think in the last meeting, it was discussed as like a a rental property, am I, am I correcting that? Um so my question pertaining to that is. How long, how long has it, have have it, has it taken? From the beginning to end of that project, and the reason for that question is, I I I see it has taken a very long time. Providing that. There are a small amount of properties there. And there's no real disturbances as far as traffic or anything like that, so it's a it's a a fixed piece of property. And I'm wondering how long has it, is it, has it been taken to develop that property? Because uh one of my comments would be. You know, from two thousand.
Let's just stick with the questions first.
So my question is.
You gave him three, can he answer those for you?
Yes, and I reserve the right to comment on on those questions if possible, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, um commissioner.
Oh, no problem, uh Mr. Cassidy.
Yeah, so I'll do my best to answer these questions, um but. Uh I guess I'm not going to get into the the density, um the commission is well aware of their regulation on density works. Um but we are under the four uh units per uh units per acre. Uh there was a reference or question regarding uh have we prepared hydrodynamic pressure test or study of the soil? Um. I'll start off by saying that this is at the master plan level. Um this is basically conceptual layout, uh once this gets approved, we ultimately need to get into detailed engineering. Of the entire project, um I've been doing this thirty-six years, um I don't think at this point I've done a hydrodynamic study of the soils. Uh what will happen as part of the development, what happens when you're developing a piece of raw land? And you create impervious coverage, uh you need to deal with increases and runoff, so. Uh technically, what we're going to be doing is what's called a hydrology study. Um to determine what are the pre and post flows, um there is a uh the brook that runs through the eastly shore. Portion of this property flowing in a southerly direction. Uh as part of the master, or sorry, the final site plan approval, uh we'll have to do a detailed hydrology and hydraulic analysis. Of our drainage system or stormwater management system uh to ensure uh that the water flowing in the brook. Uh will not exceed uh any flow rates that are presently out there, uh that's going to be a detailed study that's done as part. Of the master plan, or sorry, keep on master, the site plan approval part portion of this project. Um there was a reference to uh traffic um on the prior application. Um the uh trap, there was a traffic memo submitted as part of that application. Uh and what a traffic report or traffic study will look at is nearest intersections. And based upon the the volume of traffic that the proposed development puts on the road network system, it takes a look at the impact to the intersections. Uh I could tell you that on the prior application, those intersections, which would be Simsbury Road and uh Mountain Road. Uh basically worked at a uh level of what we call service A. Um by increasing the number of units, uh the time delay is not going to change significant to change the level of service. Uh based upon this proposed development. There was a a question about uh timeframe, uh how long the another project when you're excited the town was taking. Um I I can't tell you the exact timeframe that this is going to take to construct, a lot of it's market driven. Uh right now, the market is good, um so and obviously. Uh right now, the market is good, um so and obviously it's in our best interest to get it done in as most timely manner as we possibly can. Um um I don't know if the applicant is on, uh do you wanna talk uh chime in on anything about the timeframe? Joe, Joe, are you there? I don't think the applicants.
Is is there someone else need to be?
Yeah. Could somebody, could you hear me?
Yeah, okay, Greg's here.
Yeah, can you, can you repeat the question, I'm sorry.
The question was, there's another development, I think it's one of your developments on the other side of town, and there was a question about how long it's taking for construction. Um my representation was that a lot of the the time that it takes is market driven. Uh obviously, it's in our best interest to complete the project as soon as we possibly can and complete the units as as soon as we possibly can. Uh I'm not sure about, I think it's your uh Maribel or your um. Uh your Maribel development is to how long it's.
Yeah, and Maribel, you know, development, I mean, you know, granted, we're subject to also other agencies, like, you know, M D C approvals. Things that like that take time, but I would say for.
Yeah.
Twenty minutes.
Actual construction.
We're talking about. I would say the total construction process, the end of the day is probably like eighteen months.
Yeah, that that's what I would anticipate, but again, it's. Mainly market driven, we want to get it done, you know, as as fast as we possibly can also. So that's what I jot down for your four questions. Not the comments, but the question portion.
Thank you for uh answering those questions, my final question, and then I I'll turn it back over to the committee would be. If this plan is approved. Does that mean that you now, the developer, have to come back to the T P C again to? To to approve the other part that you're referring to, or from here and go somewhere else?
No, when this plan gets approved, this phase of the plan gets approved. We ultimately need to go back to, number one, we need to go back to the Wetlands Commission, or go to the Wetlands Commission. Well, we'll need, we'll we'll have regulated activities, so there'll be activities within the regulated area from the Wetlands, no direct impact Wetlands. Um so we'll need approval for that, and then ultimately, when we get Wetlands approval, we need to come back to this commission planning and zoning. To receive ultimate uh site plan approval that allows the actual construction of the development. That, at that point, uh we'll get into the detailed plans, so deal with grading, how the utilities are gonna work. Uh storm drainage uh and controlling stormwater runoff off the site, that's when the detailed plans get developed.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh if there's no one else out there for questions, we'll start with the commission, and if you can stop hearing you.
Excuse me, sir, may I have Mr. Myers' address?
Oh, yes. I'm I'm sorry, Adrian Miles, nine Overbrook Farms Road, Bloomfield, Connecticut, that's Miles, M Y L E S.
Thank you so much.
We we do have one more participant, um who just raised their hand, um Lori Julian.
My my question because.
Excuse me, Lori, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes.
Oh, you're breaking up.
Forty-three Maple Avenue in Bloomfield, Connecticut, and that. Oh, I'm sorry, can, oh, can you hear me better?
Yeah, can you start over again?
Can you hear me better?
Yeah, can you state your name and address again?
Hello?
Yes. Are you there?
Oh, sure.
Okay, can you state your name and address?
Yes, forty-three Maple Avenue in Bloomfield, Connecticut, Lori, yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Oh, boy, sorry, uh let me move over here, let me see if it's better over here, Maple Avenue in Bloomfield, Connecticut. Well, I was just listening to this other application, I'm actually waiting to for the for another application, but this dawned on me a question because. About traffic study, I think Mr. Cassidy brought up about the traffic study. On, and he said Simsberry and Mountain for this project, and I just won't. I'm wondering if um he has in this traffic study, if they're looking at. The implications, not just of Simsberry Mountain Road. Because I don't know if you know that Burr is a big cut through to other areas in town. So my question, that's my question, is whether you are looking. Not, and it looked like it was just one direction when you said Simsberry Mountain, that you're looking at the traffic study, I think. So so my question is, how vast is this traffic study? Because I don't think you can look at this in isolation. I live on Maple, which is off of. Of Burr, which is a major, major cut through. So I ask you take that into consideration, number one. And two, again, I think this goes to, we look at projects. And eh eh and we don't look at the unintended consequences of the other area.
Miss Julian, before you go in the comments, can can you allow him to answer your question regarding the traffic?
Thank you.
So regarding traffic, um I'm just trying to see where Burr is, so Burr looks like it's probably about uh. It's uh just to the north, uh where Mountain Road and uh Simsberry Road come. Uh it's connect together, uh it's a little bit north than that, so probably about about a half, half, quarter to half mile away. Um so when you're looking at traffic studies, um you look at the closest intersections. Uh and the way to way to think of it is um when when vehicles are leaving the site. Uh it would have anticipated that about fifty percent of the vehicle maneuvers would go. Towards Simsberry and the other fifty percent would go towards Melon Road. Once they go to that intersection, uh they they either go north or south, so if you start splitting it. Uh north and south, now it's twenty-five percent goes one direction and twenty-five percent goes the other direction. Uh you 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 typically don't go past those first intersections. Um because by the time you get to the next intersection, you you the 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 volume gets so dispersed. Especially on a a small development like this, uh this is thirty-five units in total, in total. This development will trip, uh what we call thirty uh three hundred and fifty trips a day through the course of a twenty-four hour period. Please note, a trip is considered a one-way maneuver, so it's either leaving or coming to the development. So it's really a a hundred and seventy-five uh round trips a day. Uh and it's dispersed over a twenty-four hour period. Uh so usually higher in the morning, higher, lower in uh high in the morning and high late afternoon. Um but again, the the volume that this particular development generates is is very insignificant based upon the road system and the intersections that it's going to. Uh we wouldn't typically go unless there was an identified problem. Uh other intersections, we wouldn't typically go out further than those first intersections. When that, that's typical uh traffic engineering sound practices for uh determining um impacts to intersections.
Okay, thank you. If uh there's no more questions out there in the audience, at this time, we'll move to the commission for questions. Uh we'll start, uh Mr. Mallett, you have any questions?
Uh, yes, so for. The the new layout that that's proposed um. Within the the master plan, moving up to. Is it Watkins Road? Um. Th- this significantly allows. The the bigger driveway, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, the original application, um it, the road was limited to a fifty-foot access strip into the property, so it was very limited in what could be done with the driveway. Now that we have all this additional frontage, uh allows houses on either side of the roadway, in addition to allows a boulevard. Roadway, which provides us with um fifteen-foot access uh aisles on each side and a twelve-foot island in the center, which would be sufficient. Uh more than sufficient for doing landscaping, uh a nice entry sign, very similar to what you see in Still Mountain Estates.
Right, so for the revisions dated three fourteen, that's brought several of the units. Up directly to Watkins, or at least, yeah, quite a few actually. Compared to the or original.
Actually, if you wanted to show the original, there really does not any, there's not much of a difference, uh if I look at on the original one, unit number thirty. Uh it was set at the thirty-five feet uh setback from Watkins. On the original, and then if I look at the revised, which is now unit number.
I I uh so you targeted the January one or the one that was already approved?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh regarding the one that's already approved, yeah, obviously, uh yes, they're gonna be closer, but I mean, again. Uh I don't think that was.
Oh, shoot.
As by choice, but more as um. Again, the the first two hundred feet of that property was fifty-foot right of way, you couldn't get a road in units any closer, uh they didn't really have any choice.
Okay, so i- in this, in the new plans, um. You've been able to push the units up closer to the to the main road.
Correct.
Okay, um. The wi- with the additional land, is there still the need to tap into the utilities that I I don't know if it's water and or sewer? Um for. Uh in into Overbrook or with access to Simsberry Road? Um.
So uh as part of the original. I'm sorry, as part of the original approval, the sanitary sewers were being extended from Overbrook. Uh that that extension will be continued into this development, so all the units uh will be serviced um by public sewers uh in this entire development.
And w- with both the new proposals, um it went from. Was it primarily duplexes in the the prior approved one?
Correct, it was all, it was nine buildings duplexes for eighteen units on the prior one.
Okay, so w- within the the P L R um. You know, po- part of our P L R is. You know, targeting a range of multifamily, so just curious as to. To why um. The the move to the single family.
Uh we we, again, we felt it was more um. Fitting to the surrounding neighborhood. Um seeing we're surrounded by larger single-family units and houses, in addition to uh the other P L R in this general area. Is uh consists of all single-family units, uh so we're trying to do something that's more similar to the something in that general area. We're trying to do something that's similar to the market of this area.
It it would be similar, but the would the density be clearly higher?
Well, as as I showed you with the the layout for the duplexes for a similar type of development we're doing on the other side of town. The the density, the density was actually a lot higher, um. You know, using a similar type of unit, similar setbacks, having duplexes, smaller, narrower units. I was actually able to get fifty-three units, so maxing out the density of four point zero units per acre.
Yeah, maybe I'll retrace, um it's cuz I I get your point, um buildings, number of buildings.
Yep.
Can I, can I, um, this is Greg Patch, I just wanted to add one thing about a single family versus multi-family. These really serves its. Its function is very similar to a multifamily in that it's all, it's a common interest community, so. You know, there's going to be um, you know, lawn maintenance, snow maintenance done for the benefit of the people there. It's not that people are gonna be taking care of their individual property, so. Similar to a multifamily property in that there's, you know, a common maintenance for the community.
Sure, and so going back to my question on the number of of buildings. Um being put on such a narrow property.
We've been at last question.
So. Uh I asked it originally about the density with with the duplexes, that I, but that didn't quite convey my concern and and my question. With the the number of buildings, you know, if we have duplexes, we and we only have eighteen, we only have nine buildings, right, and we can. There there is more spacing within the property because we we don't have side yards and things like that. If we push them out to all single family, now there's eighteen buildings. I'm not doing density, I'm just doing like double. So now now we have a a a massive more buildings in in the same location.
Um. They're more single buildings, again, not more units, I I think what you're asking is if if we were to take the. By taking the the singles and make them into duplex, we have more area between them. Uh I think if you take a look at, and this is what we represented last time, if you take a look at was originally approved. Um based upon the footprints that are provided here. Uh that the overall footprint, if I put two of these together, is really not any bigger than what was originally approved, it's the same same footprint. Um again, on the original approval, the separation distance between the buildings was twenty feet. Um we gone through the whole plan and shake this whole thing out, um so we can provide the same separation distance that was on the original approval. Um so again, whereas if you put the these buildings or these units together and make them duplexes. Um overall building coverage is gonna remain the same, uh similar to the building footprints that were provided last time. Um these th- these buildings are slightly narrower to accommodate for um the space between the units uh compared to what was originally approved.
Okay, I understand.
I hope I, I don't, not sure, I'm a hundred percent answering your question, I'm not.
I think you did, I think you did, thank you, um. With the other one, I had one more, oh, so at this point, you're proposing, what is it, thirty-four, um?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And based on uh. The o- original approval that we had, if we use that the same calculation. I approximately twenty-nine would be, um if I'm calculating that correctly. So take taking into account, you've acquired uh additional land, some of it is, you know, couldn't be built on, but it it counts towards the overall. So it seems like. Overall, for the for the net gain, or why I shouldn't say net or gross, cuz that that confuses it, but for the additional property. Um if we were to buy the same density per unit. Uh. It seems much higher, at least by six units, am I calculating that right?
If you're looking at the overall property or you're taking the overall property rate based upon.
Yeah, so the the new thirteen point two some odd acres.
Yeah, and so if you take that, yeah, you're you're correct, that's a twenty-nine, but again, I just. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say this, um. Most most municipalities I work in, I get, and I'm not following the regulation, but we would look at buildable area. And again, I equate this, a lot of the control and the density for this type of development is the usable area. Again, if this was a ten-acre site and nine acres was not usable. You would never have a density of eighteen units on that ten acres, it'd be a lot less. Uh if I take a look at the original piece that was developed. Uh it was a total of eight point two three acres. Of that, only sixty point five, sixty point five percent was actually buildable.
But would that extra space that was not buildable actually allow the clustering uh of the buildings closer together?
No.
All the separation, say compared to like an R thirty or an R forty.
Were you asking on the original development, would that?
On any, on any development.
Well, it depends upon the separation distance requirement of the regulations, there's no specific separation distance requirement in the P L R song. We understand that the town's position was that twenty feet was more acceptable, so we modified the plan to make it similar to what was previously approved at twenty feet. Uh again, so the the usable, the buildable area is what's controlling the overall density here. If if this, same thing, is if this was just a straightforward subdivision, and it was ten thousand square foot lots. Okay, and I had ten acres, only one acres but developable, I would only have four lots. On that piece of property, of all ten acres was developable. That would control that that density, I would have a lot more units on ten acres for a quarter acre lots, it's very similar for a P L R.
Would the, one of the benefits um be being able to build. Clo- closer together.
Right.
Okay, right, um. That's all my questions for now, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh Commissioner Goff. Any question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, um first of all, um a couple of quick things through you to the the planner. Um and I think uh Mr. Cassidy made reference to this, in the engineer's memo, a a couple of things I had questions in about and in also um. Uh the planner's memo, um. The number fourteen on the engineer's memo talks about the recreation areas, service facilities, family amenities, we're not on the in in the plan at this point. Uh master plan does not include vegetated buffers. Um and the um comment made by the planner was. The uh commission can designate specific conservation areas within the um, you know, the undeveloped areas. Um am I correct in assuming that all of those things will be addressed in the site plan? When uh you know, if should we approve the master plan, that all of those issues will be approved in the site plan?
If you're addressing that to me, one would hope.
Okay, and and Mr. Cassidy, I think you, I think you were implying that quite a few of the things in the. Yeah, the question I just asked, quite a few of the comments would be addressed in the in the future plan. Because, yeah, okay, I I mean, I did notice.
Yeah, I I was I was clarified, clarified that, again, we uh we, as you mentioned, we need to go for a site plan approval when all the details. Of the actual plan get pulled together, the fine, the fine details, landscaping, uh amenity areas. Um I will note that on the master plan that we did submit, um we did notice note like a a gazebo area, a a lawn area behind it. Um so we did note some possible amenity areas, all those fine details get worked out at the site plan level. Uh this is very similar to what was approved on the original application, it's the same gazebo, same kind of sidewalk configuration, servicing that gazebo. The buffer requirements, uh a in in the requirements in the master plan, it says we basically need to show all the zoning requirements. Such as setbacks and how we comply with those requirements which we have. It doesn't say show the landscape, but I mean, if we need to have a twenty-five foot landscape buffer. Like was shown on the site plan level for the prior application, we'll be showing a twenty-five foot landscape buffer. Am I sure we can accommodate it? Definitely, um we have a thirty-five foot setback anyways from the property line, which we've already showed we can accommodate. So we can easily put that twenty-five foot landscape buffer within that thirty-five foot uh buffer from the or setback from the property line, so. Again, those will all be handled at that site plan level, that's why I didn't want to breeze over um. All his comments, but a lot of them are site plan related, uh I just didn't want to eat up the commission's time this evening, because it's it's looks like it's gonna be late hour for you guys.
Yes, no, tha- thank you for that, and that's why I was just confirming that we didn't need to spend a lot more time on that now. And um um Planner Coleman, it is the case that that conservation, that can that conservation area issue be addressed? In the future, or does that have to be pressed if we were to approve this, the master plan?
No, we can address it at site plan.
Okay, great, um. I had one other, I had a couple of questions then, um based on Mr. Miles' comments about the egress from the um. From the proposed development, um. Is this, is the size of this such that you do not need to have emergency exits, um are we? Are we all right with that in terms of thirty-five units here? Mr. Cassidy?
Um so, let let me start by saying a couple of things, um. This this development is no bigger than Still Mountain Estates, uh which is a single point access. Uh as part of the site plan, um it will be reviewed by all departments, including your fire marshal. Uh that will make comment if he feels that um that additional access is needed. I don't anticipate it here, uh what I'll note is I think access to this plan compared to the prior plan. Is significantly better, uh in that you have a boulevarded road. Boulevard the road helps keep one lane open for the entrance, in addition to, uh we have a complete loop. Uh for the majority of the developments, which wasn't uh present in the original application. Uh the majority of those units were on a dead end, uh basically with a turnout at the end, and I even called the sack, but it a turnout at the end. Um so I think the overall access to it's a lot better. Uh if you take a look in this loop at the center of the project, it's a lot larger, uh we've actually run turning maneuvers, fire engines through the entire site. Uh and based on my professional opinion, it accesses through this site a lot better than even the original application.
Great, thank you, um have you, in terms of amenities, um what is your current plan? For the existing greenhouses? And is there any way that the existing greenhouses could be included as an amenity in your current plan?
I would need to go over that with the applicant, um to, you know, I really, I I know the greenhouse is out there, I I visited sites several times. I haven't really taken a look at the condition of the greenhouses, uh to see if they can be reused anyplace. Uh but right now, they're they're kind of in the development area, so we'd have to take a look, see if.
Well, I think they they would probably need to be moved, but uh.
Right, I I understand, but again, I I got, I would really need to study and see uh whether they can be moved, um. Without without any issue, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to commit to anything at this level.
Okay, but that will be considered, is that correct?
I'll 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 work on it with the applicant, I'll talk to the applicant about it.
Um the um are you, are you and the applicant of of aware of the new ordinance we have on tree replacement?
Uh not yet.
Okay, um you know, the this uh commission passed passed in uh an ordinance regulation. That in under permitted activities, if trees are taken down, um the same caliper, you know, the same overall caliper has to be replanted. Do you think that would be any problem um with this uh proposed development?
Same caliper?
Well, not that the tree itself doesn't have to do the same caliper, but the same overall, so you know, if you take down a. Three foot tree, three foot diameter tree, you have to at least plant other trees that would be equivalent to that.
At time of planting or at at in in the in the future when it grows?
Uh I think at time of planting.
That's, I don't know, I'm gonna plant a three foot diameter tree.
No, 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 not, you don't have to plant a three foot diameter tree, uh.
Okay.
Okay, well, I I I just.
I I think, I I appreciate you letting me know, because I'll think I'll look into it further, but.
I I think any development that is going to happen now needs to look at that as part of their um. And and maybe I need to make sure I understand the the exact nature, the exact specifications of the regulation. Uh I guess my last question um that I do want to ask is is probably going to be the the hardest one for you. Um obviously, one of the questions here is this whole question of density, do we change the density of what's already been approved? Um I do appreciate the arguments you're giving about um looking at a more refined calculation of density. Uh but suppose, just hypothetically suppose that this uh commission. Did decide to approve this plan, but under the two point two density and said we would approve this at twenty-nine units. Do you have any idea of how you would reconfigure the uh current? Development to eliminate, uh what, I guess, six units?
Yeah, I I mean, again, I had to go back to the applicant on that, I mean, I think at twenty-nine units, um. We're probably got to come up with a different plan to do something else with the property, other than what I have before you. Twenty-nine years is probably just not gonna work.
Doesn't pencil out.
Doesn't pencil out.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, uh next, uh Commissioner Marshall Neely. Any questions?
Thank you, and I apologize for my technological problems. I um, I'm I'm glad that uh Commissioner Goff brought up the uh. Fired trucks and, you know, I I was sitting here wondering. How would emergency vehicles get through? Um in a development like that, but my question is, as far as the snow removal. And so forth and so on, is that going to be a Bloomfield? Responsibility, or is it going to be the folks who live there as if it was an HOA? Situation, um so are we looking at, you know, that kind of upkeep, maintenance of the road? Uh is that going to be on the town, or is that going to be on the folks who live there? That's basically what I'm asking right now.
Yeah, so I'm a good question, um as represented, um this is going to be an HOA, it's gonna be a common interest community. Um so, and as as mentioned, or brought up in your staff memo, um the road it road system would be a private road system. Therefore entirely required to be maintained, plowed by the development and homeowners of that development. In addition to lawn areas, uh would be common interest and maintained by the uh HOA uh as part of the overall development. Uh and the big advantage to the town, rather than doing conventional subdivision. Is with a private road, the maintenance, long-term maintenance, such as paving, reconstruction of the roadway would also be on the HOA, never becomes. A town requirement, so therefore no expense for maintenance of the roadway to the town.
That's that's all I have for now.
Thank you, uh Commissioner James, any questions?
Yeah, uh just one, I'm looking at the um plants and uh. There's this red line, you said that was the buffer, yes?
There's two lines, um there's the the first red line closer to the water courses, a hundred foot upland review area from the wetlands associated with the water course. In addition to prior regulations, wetlands regulations, uh there is a two hundred foot regulated area to the water course itself. The the actual physical brook, so you'll see two lines on that plan.
So, yeah, it's, yeah, there's, sorry, there's a lot, I do see those two lines going like. Kind of parallel to one another, but there's like a red line circling the entire property. Just inside this black line, I guess that's the bounds of the property.
Correct, there's a there's a purple line and and indicated the original zone line, and then there's a flesh colored line that indicates the new proposed zone line.
Would you, would you mind pulling that up, just so we're talking about the same thing?
I I think she's talking about the dotted red line.
Yeah, the buffer, the back.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the dotted red line, as I mentioned, zoning wise, there's a thirty-five foot uh setback from the uh perimeter property line.
Yeah, and I'm noticing that um some of the properties, like the backyards, like that line is right up against that. So is the idea that that's that that those are their backyards?
That's the, that that's the setback line, building setback line, I can't go any closer to the property line with that.
And then there's, sorry.
So there would be room off the back of the house, if you're asking, there's not, there's no room off the back of the house, there's still, that's their yard area off the back of the house. And it's the same, if you take a look at the original plan that was approved, um in particular, the houses that butt up against. Um the uh houses over on Overlook Brook, um. Um it it it's it's holding the same setback, those original uh units were at the same setback. Uh as was originally approved.
Okay, um I guess I'm just thinking of, um there was a conversation earlier about the like the property buffer, buffer, and you mentioned that there's thirty-five. Feet for that.
Yeah, so can I share my screen real quick? This is, explain it, um. So the plan I have up here is the original approved plan. This line here, uh so this is the site plan is approved, so this line is that same property line we're talking about, if I zoom back out on this. So this is the residence at um uh. O- over overbrook farm, uh then these houses, if I blow back. Uh sorry, if I zoom back in. Sorry, my computer's getting a little tired here, so it's going slow. This dash line here is the thirty-five foot setback line that we're talking about. The plantings you see here are the twenty-five foot buffer plantings, this was originally approved, so we're going to be doing. The same that was originally approved. There will be area behind the units to that buffer, it's not going to be the units, it's going to be right up. To a landscape buffer in in the back, there's going to be some room behind that unit.
That's my only question.
Hey, thank you, uh Commissioner Bolton. Any questions?
Sorry, uh Mr. Sure, you gotta, you gotta give me a second to hit the unmute button, sorry. Um. Commissioner Goff hit some of my engineer questions, thank you, sir, and Commissioner Malet also hit some of my questions, and so. Um. The applicant is addressing two items, and one, I I don't have any issue with the zone change, um from R forty to PLR. I I do have an issue with the density, um. This in considered under section nine point five, um and as such, the current. Plan of conservation and development. Since we haven't approved or accepted, uh a new P O C D has to be considered. And so this area is considered low density, a low density neighborhood. I I would like the applicant, Mr. Cassidy, to just, in his professional opinion, it's. Explain how the modifications you're making. To the master plan are consistent with the current plan of conservation and development as it relates to the densities.
So again, I, you know, when we take the interpretation of a low tendency development, we're we're thinking that it's um. Not maxed out uh on the allowable density in the PLR, which is the four units per acre. Uh we tried to find something that's very similar uh to adjoining developments. I think our best example is Still Mountain Estates. Uh when I go through the math on Still Mountain Estates based upon the number of units. Um which I have out there is being. Pardon me one second, forty-four units, um and I believe they were on a little over thirty acres, um so overall density, they're very similar until we have. But more importantly, again, I don't, I don't want to harp on it too much, but you got to look at what it can actually build on, and that was kind of controlling the density. If you take a look at Still Mountain Estates, they had even more wetlands, any more restricted areas than we even had on this property. Um so that's what kind of controlled their density. Yeah, I'm I'm trying to do something that's very similar to the area, again, that was one of the purposes for making a single family rather than duplexes, uh to do something that complements the area. Uh seems a good transition from the other developments on the north end of town down to the southern end, end of the town, uh to do something that's similar. Again, we like Still Mountain Estates, we think it's a good fit for the neighborhood, we think it would complement the overall neighborhood, uh so we're trying to do something that's very similar.
Yeah, I I I don't disagree with the uh with the change, um I do believe it should be a single family approach. Um uh the actual, you know, change to PLR and extend ended the PLR. I I think fits better with the uh with the uh the multifamily, um. That I, you know, I I I it's 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 somewhat challenging, but um I I'm I'm a little bit concerned that uh. Uh we're we're just, we we are increasing the density, but I think Commissioner Goff. Um posed a good question as to um. How you would maneuver your 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 master plan if you were. Um if we approved that uh at the original two point two, uh do use uh per acre, but um. Do you anticipate, because one of the engineers uh comments uh was related to um. At this stage, it's it's schematic in nature, and I understand the construction, I'm a construction manager. As you begin to to grade the site, uh do you, do you think you'll have any complexities? Or 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 difficulties in um your current master plan that you're trying to uh propose um?
The majority of this site, as I was saying, gradual grade down towards uh the brook.
Yep.
Um yeah, I I think the grading is pretty simple to work with here. Uh I already have stormwater management kind of worked out in my head, uh again, I've been doing this for about thirty-six years. Um so um that's one of my my passions, is dealing with stormwater management. Um so I I really, uh I'm quite pleased with this piece of property uh for being able to develop it. Uh it has a lot of advantages, again, it's got some grade but not too much. Um I've I've done other developments in Bloomfield over the years, um where um you, I know a lot of areas in Bloomfield are very flat. Very wet, um very difficult to develop, um dealing with high groundwater tables. Uh and flood plains and those type of aspects, but this one, I I like this property, it's 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 a bit higher, it's got a nice grade to it. Uh but not not too steep, it's not a mountain size that I need to work with, so I'm I'm pleasantly pleased and. Very confident that I'll be able to accommodate on the grading and uh necessary utilities to successfully develop this property.
With with the acreage being impacted for development of five acres, triggering the stormwater discharge. Permanent requirements with uh deep, you anticipate any issues or challenges with, you know, stormwater retention? Re- requirements, are there any new requirements for deep?
No, I mean, this this is, again, this is a relatively easy piece of property to develop, or for for me to deal with. Um I mean, I give you a couple examples of whatever recently have approved. Um not not within the town here and dealing with stormwater general permits, um. Um I recently, if anyone's familiar with the um um the old children's museum on Trumpworth Avenue in West Hartford. Is now under construction for a large uh high-rise multifamily development. Uh which is successfully under construction at this point, uh that's one of my, one of the proposals I've worked on. Successfully dealt with uh deep and stormwater management per permit on that one, that's a three point nine acre site. And then more recently, the one that's going to start up construction that be next, and again, I I do deal with a lot of multifamily. Is um at Evergreen Walk, uh if anyone knows Evergreen Walk, the backside Evergreen Walk, uh there's a development called Tempo, it's an apartment development. Recently have approval for a hundred and sixty-five new multifamily units at the back. Very complex land, uh that is very sensitive wetlands that had joined an entire property, but you know, recently, once again, received. A D E B general permit for the development of that property, I have a hundred and sixty-five units. On about an eight acre development on that particular property, so I'm very familiar with multifamily. This is, I'm I'm very comfortable on on this property, I think it's good separation distances, I think it's a reasonable density based upon the buildable area. On this overall property, and I think it can easily accommodate any stormwater management. And actually do some nicer things too, a lot of times we don't have chances to do any low L I D. Um stormwater quality measurements on properties, but this one affords me the opportunity to do that.
Thank you very uh much, uh Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh Commissioner Ina, any questions?
Yes. Going back to the engineering division's memorandum. There are fifteen paragraphs. Uh there are high, and you know, on that memorandum. My question is to Mr. Coleman. My question is to Mister Coleman. Uh there's seem to be quite a few contingencies and other concerns, including the density. Is the T P Z able to really given all these uh these fifteen paragraphs of concerns and contingencies, is the T P Z, I would have thought that um as some there are very technical uh issues that are raised here. I'm thinking that those technical issues probably would need to be resolved by the professionals and the engineers and um the staff before I think T P Z probably needs some kind of guidance and resolution of the technical issues in the engineer's memorandum before we can um really look at this.
Commissioner. A lot of those are standard that we that are put in, and they are, they will be all, they they are raised now by the engineers when they do their preliminary review, but they will be addressed at the site plan approval process. And so when when we, when the applicant comes back for the site plan, the engineers will have um at least to their satisfaction, hopefully resolve the the majority of those issues. If there are any outstanding, they'll indicate those to the commission, but they would be resolved between the approval of the master plan and the and the app in the development and presentation of the of the uh site plan. So that it's not out of the ordinary that those that that list of issues is is included by the engineers, we we pass those on to you for your information. Um they are primarily addressed to the staff, and none of them went to the Wetlands Commission. But we thought you would benefit from their from their information, but they will be resolved before the site plan is approved.
So you're saying the uh T P Z can go ahead and approve this application with the contingencies and all the issues that are raised on the engineering department memorandum?
They would be addressed in the interim, or they come back to the site plan, you're just approving an overall master plan now that does not have, get down to that level of detail, even though they're addressed by the engineer. Well, because they they're engineers and um and just the zone change. All of those technicalities will be addressed as part of the site plan review.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
Okay, uh Commissioner Hussein.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair, trying to make this quick, so we can move on. Sticking specifically just only to the zone change, uh I think you mentioned originally, these are all gonna be rental units, correct?
No, these are for sale units.
So how do you plan on separating the property lines when you're gonna um?
No, it's a it'd be a condo, so you would basically buy the unit with a limited common element area around the unit, and then or a defined area around the unit, it wouldn't be an individual property. The property would be under a uh common uh area of maintenance of the common areas, so you buy, it's like buying a condo.
Right, right, so then you'll then combine the property lines into one property?
It'll be all combined into one property, or parcels will be combined into one.
All right, great, and you're gonna main, right now you're maintaining a twenty foot separation, correct, including the new additions to the east? That you added to the new um to the new uh area, correct?
That's correct.
And then, do you remember what Still Road, you showed Still Road, do you remember what the density unit was for those?
Um a- again, it it would look like it was slightly less, I can do the math real quick, I think they had about so the only problem I have with Still Road is I couldn't depict off the actual area. Um so it was uh, sorry.
You're too crazy, but um I was just looking at an aerial view, and it doesn't, I mean, I was trying to do the overlay of what you proposed combined to Still Road, and it Still Road looks a little bit less, I guess, but um anyway, which you don't have to, you don't have to.
It's the same, I mean, we 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 mimic Still Road, I mean, the separation, when the units are the same. The only thing that's probably different is our units is not as wide as they are, our separation to to Still Road itself compared to Watkins is the same. Uh I think the biggest difference in Still Road is they had a lot more restricted areas, a lot more wetlands that we're we're dealing with, non-buildable area.
All right, anyway, my um, I think the six units came up again, the additional units that it would be, it would think it was six units to get it back to the two point two, two point two, right? The D U versus a two point six, right?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's all I had questions.
Like, again, all this re- re- aside is something I need to go back to the applicant, but you know, based upon the the market analysis right now, it's just not gonna work, and let figure something else to do with the profit.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we'll get the comments on that, but I think I think you heard from the remaining commissioners that we think we're probably gonna stick with a two point two, you you'll have to go back to the drawing board in terms of the or the master plan and 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 the zone, the map change, so.
Okay, all done?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Hussein, thank you. Um I don't have any questions, uh right now we'll move on to comments. So does anyone out in the audience have any comments? No hands for comments, we'll start with the commission then. Um we'll start with Commissioner Bolton, any comments?
Uh Mister Chair, I think Adrian Miles has his hands up.
Oh, he does? Oh, no, okay, I see it now. All right.
Hi, Mister Chair, thank you again, and thank you, Commissioner. Uh I just wanted some clarity, and and as part of my comments, I know that um the engineer did reference uh sewer uh moving from Overbrook and extending to this new complex, uh but there's no sewer in Overbrook. Um so I just wanted to kind of point that out, and um.
Mister Chair, I'm sorry, for the for the point of clarity, sorry, Mister Miles, can we just keep the comments to what the the applications are, which is a zone change in the master plan? We can address all the other stuff later, I do apologize, Mister Miles, but I think we have a lot of applications still left, I do, I I think, Mister Chair, if you can.
Yes, I appreciate it, thank you.
To the applicant, the applications for the zone, the map change.
Only to the to the to the zone change from residential to P L R.
Okay, so um thank you for that, uh with with regards to the zone change. My comment is that this is a low density area, and I think that uh the the committee needs to, you know, kind of you to recognize that as they do and respect that as they do, and and you know, if this plan is gonna go forward, go forward with the understanding that it has to fit into a lower density area capacity as regulated, and again, this is a a zone change in um T P C meeting, and I'm addressing the the uh the change of the zone, and I think that if it's gonna be uh if the plan is gonna be changed, take into consideration that this is a low density area, and that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. There anyone else out there? Okay, that said, uh we'll try it again, and we'll go, we'll start with uh Commissioner Commissioner Hussein, any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair, um since we combined both initially, I guess I'll just comment in both, so we can move along, both A and B, we can vote on them separately. Um I don't have an issue, I don't think, with the zone map change, based on what was presented tonight, to include um the additional acreages into the P L R zone, so that would be my comment for part A. Part B, I don't have a problem again with the zone change, or I'm sorry, with the change in the master plan, but I would wanna adhere to the um two point two D U to keep it to a low density. And I would, I don't have issue approving that, but instead of moving from eighteen to twenty nine units, I would reduce it to the six units, which would then probably bring it to, I believe, thirty, whatever the, whatever it was, I think the difference to keep the two point two units, that's all my comment is, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bolton, any comments?
Uh yes, uh thank you, Mister Chair, I echo uh Commissioner Haynes's comments, um I would like to uh thank Mister Cassidy for his presentation, um they did a fantastic job, um but I I think the uh commission um um has uh the right under the regs to uh set forth um the um the density, and I think it should uh be consistent with what was previously approved, which I believe is two point two D U's per acre, so thank you, Mister Chair.
Okay, appreciate it. Uh Commissioner James, any comments?
I'm really big on housing, and I I realize that um we do need more housing in Bloomfield and across a range of options, um I do hear all of the concerns on density, and uh I feel like we could try to find something that would work for us to get some good housing in in Bloomfield, um but not having it like crammed in and um really feeling uh very dense, so.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Ina, any comments?
I just echo the uh comments of uh Commissioner Hussein and James and Bolton. No additional comments at this time.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Marshall Neely. Any comments?
Yes, and I I echo the sentiments of Commissioners Hussein, James and Bolton. And I also um I I know that we need more housing in Bloomfield, but I I would like to think that it would be more affordable housing in Bloomfield where um you know, the market rate doesn't um squeeze people out for being able to get in there. So that's a big concern for me, but I I do agree emphatically or wholeheartedly with Commissioners um Ina Hussein and James, that's it.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Goff, any comments?
Yeah, um I I will go along with my fellow commissioners on this, I I I think, I I do wanna compliment the uh the applicant and the uh Mister Cassidy, I think that um based on what was put before us last time, um and you've done a great job of sort of making something, I think, a lot nicer and uh more conforming to the land. Um I don't think the main concern of the commission last time was the use of the other piece of land, but just the fact that it wasn't subdivided first, and I think doing this as one entire development makes a lot more sense. Um I would like to comment, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but based on what Mister Cassidy said, it appears that the still mountain density is about one and a half, because I think he said there were forty four units over thirty acres. Um so that looks like about one and a half. Um but so I I would, you know, would point that out that in terms of low density nearby, that does seem to be the case. So I think my only issue is I would go go along with my fellow commissioners, that I do think that um what I'd like to see is this this basically type of development, but kept at the two point two uh density level, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Malet.
Um I have no uh problem with the rezoning, uh I think the new piece of land might actually help with some options, um and this area of town is sprinkled with P L Rs. Um uh on the on the plan itself, um I'll I'll go back to the density thing, um most of the P L Rs are a a lot of the developments like this. Um they're able to centralize and, you know, keep away from the 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 neighboring or away from the main roads, so it seems like, um you know, that a- as a developer, probably, you know, the the first and best plan is to maximize everything you can get out of the land, and I think I think that was done, but I don't think it fits with um our our planning, uh meaning the the P O C D, um what we wanna see in this area, so uh I I think adding the piece of land will help with options, but the the density is just gonna be a sticky point.
Okay, thank you. Um and and I'll I'll come in, um once again, I I I appreciate the presentation, I think Mister Cassidy and them did a great job. I don't have a problem with the first one, the zone change from residential to P L R. And I guess, um you know, my comment would be that I hope that in the event that this is approved at two point two density with a maximum of twenty nine units, that somehow Mister Cassidy, that you could still find a way to reconfigure and uh and not walk away from it. Um it is a nice, a nice uh development, and um I just hope that the two point two, that you can find a way to to work through that in the event that it that the uh commission does approve a two point two.
So what what I would say is, you know, again, um you know, I I thought we put on a pretty good argument as to why the density needs why we feel that density is appropriate for this uh property. Uh I understand the commission's position, that they would like to see a density similar to as previously approved on the other piece of property. Um uh again, we've gone through the numbers, what's the cost to develop with the additional acquisition of the property, twenty nine units is just not gonna work, we gotta come up with some alternate plans to figure out how to make this thing be financially feasible project. Um so that being said, I mean, if the commission's mindset is to stick with the two point two units density, um what I would request that happens is um that number one, um if you are comfortable with approving the zone change portion to P L R, I'm okay with that, but the master plan approval, we need some time to kind of think about it, um so it asks at a minimum, will you continue uh that portion, or either close it, or can't close it, you have to continue uh that portion of the uh application uh to allow us another month to kind of rethink things out and how we can make things work here, that's all I could ask for at this point. Uh to allow us some time to think, we, you know, again, I don't wanna get stuck with an approval for twenty nine units, and we have to come back and just say, you know, it's never gonna happen, not gonna work. Um we need to digest it and figure figure some things out.
Okay, thank you.
This is great, am I allowed to ask a question?
Sure.
Earlier on, one of the, whether it was a comment or a question by one of the commission members, it said that in this low density area that the density was set at two point two units per acre. Was there actually something that said it was set at two point two, or was that just the result of dividing the acreage by the number of units approved? Because when they, when the P O C D says this is a low density area, is there something in the P O C D or elsewhere that it says it's X number of units per acre and low density versus medium density, like where did that two point two number come from for this area, other than just a fraction that that was calculated by dividing the acres by the number of units?
I think if I can add, I think per the um the zoning regulations under um I think it's five point three or something like that, it says when a district is changed to uh P L R, the commission shall designate the maximum density permitted, and in such condition shall be a part of the P L R. So I think because the previous commission made that change and reassigned that two point two for the maximum density, that's what this commission is basically upholding.
That's correct.
Yes, I agree. It was a result of the prior approval, so by default, that is what was established.
So so if this, if if the owner of three ninety one Sinsbury Road before it was transferred to us, if they had sought to convert it to a P L R and brought an application, would they be subject to the two point two?
No, they'd be subject to whatever, because it's a new P L R, they'd be subject to whatever density was established, but that potential P L R.
Could this, could this be established as its own P L R?
Say again?
Could this be established as as it as its own P L R and not be combined with the existing P L R?
No.
Why not?
Because you're amending the existing P L R, you're making changes to the one that was already approved.
But we do have the option of coming back as a separate piece of property as its own development and leaving the original development as was approved.
You do have that option.
We have, so that's one thing we need to take a look at over the next month and just figure out if we're better leaving the existing development the way it is, or if there's some kind of modification we can make to the combined development.
You then need to keep this, the zone map change hearing open. You would have to agree to an extension. The zone map change hearing needs to be closed this evening in accordance with the timing regulations.
So.
You may request, and we, and the commission at its discretion can grant you an extension. Um but if you do not, you do not want them to act on not tonight, on the uh proposed change to the P L R, you need to so request.
The let's, again, again again, we 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 need to revisit the two point two units per acre, uh let's keep both of them open, uh the applicants in agreement to provide an extension of thirty five days um to cover your next meeting, which we can work with staff and, you know, re-figure out some things, and you know, how to make this development, this overall development work. But we'll we'll agree to a continuation of the meeting and an extension.
And and just, just to add a little bit more to it, too, Greg, and you made a good point, if you did the new P L R, one And and just just to add a little bit more to it too, Greg, and you made a good point. If you did the new PLR, one thing you could potentially do, because you are gonna be in. Wetlands regulated area and you want to tap into that, maybe you'll combine the entire thing, then make it a PLR, so then you can regulate some of the wetlands on the other side. If you want to get into the wetland ready, get it. I'm just trying some stuff out there, ideas out there, so for you and James to think about too.
Yeah, and I think we, I mean, you know, again, I think we just wanna. We just want to figure out all our options and just look at it from the, you know, from, you know, different angle, that's all.
Right, no, I agree. I think, yeah, the best thing to do is continue vote if it's okay with the applicant.
Yeah, I've I've converted the applicant there to an agreement of an extension.
Yeah. All right, thanks for those answers, Greg. That was helpful. Thank you.
Okay, great.
All right, so Mr. Chair, I'll just make a motion to just to keep moving here. I'll just make a motion to um. In this case, I'll just combine vote. Um public hearing is number uh aid to zone map change application at three thirty-nine Simsberry Road. For an R forty residential district to a PLR. Um for an added development to an existing master plan. And the applicant and owners will hold with court. In part B, the special permit applications per sections five point four H to A Bloomfield zoning regulations modify an existing master plan at seventeen Watkins Road. Twenty-one R Watkins Road nineteen over the Brook Farm to add a portion of three ninety-one Simsberry Road to the overall development area. And increase the number of dwelling units from eighteen to thirty-four applicant will work, all be continued to the next meeting.
Commissioner, could you also include in that that the applicant has agreed to that extension?
Extension of thirty-five days.
Yes, and the applicant has agreed to the thirty-five day extension.
And Jonathan will follow up with a letter tomorrow for the extension.
amended and second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion on extending this application to the next meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, extension, chair votes aye.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Certainly, the next item is gonna take up considerable amount of time. The hour is already getting relatively late. I don't know whether the commission wants to discuss. With the possibility of having a hard stop at a certain time this evening so that everyone is aware. You know, that either eleven, eleven-thirty, whatever you choose. And if tried to do that, the staff would make one request that item number five C. Which is the uh proposed moratorium on cannabis. I'll be acted on tonight so that we can put that moratorium in place as soon as possible.
Okay, well, you read my mind on the first one. Um. If it's okay with the commission. Would you guys be amended to ending this meeting no later than eleven, eleven-thirty?
I am okay with that.
Yes.
All right, I I would certainly say eleven. I think that at past eleven, we are not probably doing anyone any justice. Um I would also like.
You got the twelve-thirty last time, so.
I know, and uh.
It wasn't easy.
It wasn't pretty, no. Um can I just make an additional comment? Uh we have, we have several items on the agenda, and I would like to hear from the planner. Um are we required to open the hearing on? The Dunkaster development tonight? Uh or can we um? Postpone that till next time and open the other and and try to deal with all the other matters that we have before us tonight?
I. We've already extended their hearing once. You'd have to get another, you'd have to get approval from them to extend the hearing. Uh to for another thirty, which would be the last extension you could provide them.
I I think honestly, we already moved over the um, we already moved over a P O C D, we already moved over this that this hearing again. And we're gonna end up being in the same agenda item again, starting looking at it ten o'clock probably again next time. So I think it's best we should start listening to them now.
I I um, you know, I I I hear all that. It's it's it is getting late. Um we can certainly have a special meeting to kind of break some of this up. Um uh some of us have to work in the morning, and I I certainly don't want to be here till twelve-thirty. I I concur with uh. Commissioner Goff, eleven o'clock for me. I'm gonna call the hard stop. Um I certainly don't want to be here till twelve or one in the morning, but um this is, there's a lot on the agenda. I think Dunkaster. In fairness, Dunker, I I don't know why we're, we have already pushed it out um. A a whole month, but they they need their, I think they need a special meeting. Uh there's a lot. To digest. I I I don't want to make a decision rashly. I I I'd like to be able to to sift through the documents. Um listen to the arguments. Uh I I think if you try to push it in tonight, Commissioner Hussein, I it's. I know I I it won't be enough time unless we're here till one-thirty, it'll be enough time for me.
I I agree, I I agree. I don't, I didn't want to push it into the other meeting, but I'd especially.
No, I know, I agree. I don't, I I don't think that's fair either. If we want to push it out once. You think we could squeeze it into the, is that the the eighteenth or the sixth we're meeting next month?
The eighteenth is our regular meeting. We haven't scheduled a special meeting date. The eighteen.
Are you sure? Hold on, hold on. Let me just pull the calendar, because I thought, don't we meet, we meet on the fourth?
Yeah, but it's a, there's a holiday why this, this. The month of April, we're meeting on the eighteenth. We don't have a special meeting set up at all.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I mean, I I I I don't think that Dunkaster should to continue to be pushed out, and I I I think that. If if everyone is amenable to it, we should have a special meeting. Clear the agenda, less Dunkaster, so that we're not here till twelve-thirty, one o'clock, because it's it's gonna be a late night. If we try to get through all this. Have to commit to sticking, sticking it out.
Just one more. I am not available the fourth, so I would request if we're gonna have a special, if we can do it maybe the week before the eleventh, if the applicant is okay with that. And if it's okay.
Week before the eleventh or the eleventh?
All right, the week of the eleventh. Right, the week of the eleven.
Okay.
If it's okay.
Which which would be a week before our our regular meeting. Oh, okay, yep. That's in two weeks. Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, I would be minimal that.
Okay. Uh how about everybody else? Does that work for everyone else? The eleventh, April eleventh?
Yeah. Yes.
I think so.
I I have a conference that I I will be going to, so um that's in Bristol, but. I could probably log on from my phone or something at the conference, so I can make that, I can make that work.
Okay.
Okay.
Um excuse me, Mr. Would we get, have to get permission to from the applicant, Jonathan?
That's the next thing we have to do.
I'm I'm gonna promote them to panelist in a minute. Um.
Would that special meeting be just for this Dunkaster hearing?
Dunkaster.
One moment, I have several names.
So so do we need an extension for that, or do we, is, when's the last possible night that the the hearing can start? Don't you have in your memo?
Yeah, this is brand new, so this hasn't been opened yet, so we should be in good shape for that.
I think it's in the memo, isn't it?
Hmm.
There are several people I'm promoting, so uh just give me one moment. They should be coming on soon. I promoted Lauren, Robert. Um. I believe they're all with Dunkaster. Is there anyone else? Um I don't see any hands raised for this case.
So um I'm sorry, uh Mr. Chair threw you to the planner. What what is the latest date we can open the hearing?
Uh well, today would have been the deadline.
Ah, okay.
It was last, last meeting, uh but they gave a thirty-five day extension. Um and uh you, they they can have an overall extension of sixty-five days total. Um for for all extensions, um you know, requested. Meaning that if you've requested an extension to open the public hearing for this, that's it. At the very next hearing. You have to hear the case. Um and then after you open the public hearing, you have thirty-five days to act. Um on on the matter. So you don't have to act that night. Um given that if you're having a special meeting uh just for this. I mean, you have, you know, a little bit more time.
No, I I understand. And given that we we met on the twenty-third last time, and now it's the twenty-eighth, we basically have exhausted the thirty-five.
Well, you've exhausted one uh just just partial of of the request for an extension. You have an additional thirty-five. I'm sorry, thirty days. It's a total of sixty-five days, so another thirty-day extension can't be more than thirty.
Basically, we can go on the eleventh, and if we need it more time, we can also go the eighteenth. We can continue it to the eighteenth.
Remember, the original extension was because the Wetlands Commission was unable to have a meeting in January, so everything got pushed up a month. Or forward a month. I think we need to hear from. I assume that Kelly Papa will speak on behalf of um Dunkaster in terms of their. The willingness uh to allow us to extend the hearing or not.
Actually, I would like to do that if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Good evening, Attorney Joe Williams, uh with shipment and good one, I represent Dunkaster. Um well. Yes, we will consent to an extension um because we understand the situation, and it's taxing for all of you as as volunteer members, and of course, we want. You to be able to to focus on the presentation when we make it. Um. I would note, we filed our application in mid-November. It was, I assume, received in December. Um so it's, it's been pending quite a while already. We would like to have it heard as soon as possible. Unfortunately, um. The eleventh is not gonna work for our team because uh my lead client representative is away that week and um. Is absolutely essential to the presentation and to be present for the hearing. So um would you be able to either to do it next week or um, you know, soon the the week thereafter?
The week thereafter is the eleventh.
Well, next week would be the fourth. I meant the week thereafter of the eleventh, so I mean the week of the fifteenth or the nineteenth.
That would be the regular meeting.
That would be the regular meeting, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, this is gonna be a special meeting, so I mean, actually, we could do it on a Wednesday and still have our regular meeting Thursday. Oh. Do it on a Tuesday, and in the event we need it Wednesday, we can continue the special meeting to Wednesday and still have our regular meeting on Thursday.
Yeah. And I could also, Mr. Chair, um we could also potentially um. The hearings, yeah, we could have the other material that we've pushed to the eighteenth meeting. At a special meeting and have Dunkaster on the eighteenth, right? Though the PLR that we just did, we could do that at a special meeting.
Probably easier to just kind of do this one.
Okay, I'm just throwing, throwing out.
Like, um the tenth, the Wednesday. The, I think the Thursday we said was the eleventh. Yeah, that's a great idea for the what, does the Wednesday work, I guess?
Well. Yeah, I don't think that week was a good week for them.
Right, no, my client's away that that entire week.
The week, oh, okay.
Right.
They can't join virtually?
I don't believe so, no.
Uh hopefully, we will be having a live meeting.
True.
That would be great.
Commissioner Goff, um suggestion could work, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if you. On the eleventh, we pick up the. The items. Other than Dunkaster that are presently on the agenda. That we don't get through today. Um and then do just basically try and do Dunkas around the eighteenth.
Yeah, but what we need a special meeting for those two items? I mean, we don't, we don't have much left on this agenda.
No, I think you could act nice. There is, we have one other PLR scheduled for the eighteenth that we could try and move around.
We don't have to hear it the eighteenth, right? We have time to open that one. It's up to the commission.
We we can just open that and and not and not hear it. We have a patient pending.
We just received it today, so.
Okay, um. Whatever's accommodating for the applicant, because he he needs to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I I can't remember. We talked about it. Is a week from tonight possible for folks, April fourth?
I think Kevin, our secretary, I think, would be unavailable.
Yeah, I'm out of the country, so it's gonna be hard for me to jump up on the call. And again, I don't want to hold it up, but I mean. I mean, I am the secretary.
It's a, it's a big one.
Yeah, I think we want all, all hands on deck. I think we need all hands on deck in this one. So I think, I think, Mr. Chair, I think if it's okay with the applicant, let's just do it to eighteen Dunkaster only. And then we can do a special meeting for all the additional items that we don't, that we did tonight and or we didn't get to, if that's okay, the eighteenth. Or is that too far out for you guys?
Well, we, I did have my team, uh I believe, prepared and had the eighteenth on their calendar as a possible continuation date, so if you don't mind me. Since we're all just here remotely, just asking my team to speak up if anybody who was going to present cannot be available on the eighteenth.
Yeah, that works for me, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. That works for me. Thank you, Commissioners.
Appreciate um you making the accommodation on the on the agenda.
Okay.
So it works for the public too.
We're gonna move these guys to the eighteenth.
It's gonna be a really great presentation. I'm sorry you have to wait for it.
So we're not opening it at all, right, Mr. Chair? So I don't even need to uh make any motions or anything, correct?
Uh we may have to make a motion to reschedule it.
We need to make a motion to to um.
To reschedule it to the eighteenth. We won't open it. We'll just reschedule it.
I would open it and then continue it to the eighteenth with the uh permission that has been granted by the applicant.
No, I don't think we want to open it because then it starts to.
I just thought we wanted to reschedule it.
Yeah. I don't know if you want to open it.
Do you have to open it to reschedule it?
No, no, they just have to give us the extension.
With the grant the extension, no.
Yeah.
They go authorize an extension, you can just extend it.
Okay.
All right, so let's just do that. I I'll make a motion, let's extend the um special permit application for uh five point five H master plan for modifications. Oh wait, that's the wrong one. I'm sorry. Is that the right one? No, it is. I'm sorry, it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Dimensions to the elements of an existing master plan at twenty-eight dash eighty and ninety um. Lawford Road, Bloomfield, applicant Dunkaster, in care of Kelly Papa. That's part A. Of the uh new public hearing, right?
Yep. Is there a second on that extension?
Second. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion on that? Extending it to April eighteenth.
April, that's gonna be April eighteenth, okay. And what's the other date for the others?
Uh we haven't really confirmed that yet.
Okay.
So this, this is, we're just gonna actually. Extend this to our April eighteenth. Permanent meeting meeting date.
And just to be clear, we just want to have this as the only agenda item.
Yes. Well. I I'll have to leave that to staff.
We have.
I don't know what else they have.
We do have an app- application that came in, um definitely, that we we will be on the agenda, but it depends on how this goes. You. We can always table that other item.
Okay.
For the next public hearing.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so it's been moved in second far as the extension. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of extending this application to April eighteenth signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extension, chair votes aye.
See you then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Sorry, Kelly's gonna have to pay all our consultants three hours there now.
Okay, uh the next item on the agenda is also a public hearing. It's a new public hearing, so I would ask the secretary if he would read the legal notice?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Let me just pull it up. I do apologize. It's here somewhere. Okay. It is here, all right. Okay, as.
Five B.
Legal notice as published. All right, so the legal notice by town Bloomfield for the town plan and zoning commission. A notice is hereby given to the uh to the town plan and zoning commission will hold its regular meeting virtually via Zoom on Thursday, March twenty-eighth. At seven P M. To consider the following. And that is I L M Song. Which is five.
B.
B, right, that's it, define it here, H L M Song. All right, special permit application per section four point five D. Point four point K, principal use and structure. Structures to allow a restaurant use at ten twenty-seven Blue Hills Avenue, Unit B, AKA ten twenty-five Blue Hills Avenue, per. The assessor's card. The applicant is Ilmi Song. The owner is C H D Associates LLC.
Yep. He is, uh if they're present tonight, I'm going to promote them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then again, this was a reminder, the applications. And then again, this was a reminder, the applications are available for review on the town of Bloomfield's website and that and and at the Land Use Office located at eight hundred Bloomfield Avenue, Bloomfield, Connecticut, zero six zero zero two.
Mr. Song, you're you're on.
Oh, you muted. Okay.
Currently, I own the fish market in ten twenty three Blue Hills Avenue. The just of backside my building, there was a flower shop, but that one was closed. So I'm gonna open there as the fish and chips. So there's, I'm expecting some, you know, synergy pact. So because currently I own the fish market and then the the fish and chips, there's a very small space, seven hundred and twenty square feet. Uh, so just, uh, take out only and then just a fish, fish and chips. So, um, um, very simple, you know, the very simple menus like a fish and chip. Uh, and then the fry in fishes, then just take out. Uh, then my business hour is gonna be the nine thirty to eight thirty. And then my parking lot is enough more than you know, so, uh, um, do you guys have any questions?
Uh, yeah, we'll we'll get to that. Are are you done with your presentation?
Um, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, are are you done?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, Jonathan.
I'm gonna let Linda do this one.
Oh, sure, Linda.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, the subject property is on a parcel with on that comprise of three buildings on there. Um, this one is right in the middle. Um, I can share a screen. Uh, basically, it's located in the G W D zone, which allows for, um, restaurant, um, not just takeout. He is doing a takeout portion to it, but will have a couple of just seating area. Um, no drive through window is proposed. Um, I know that it's not allowed also in the G W D zone. Um, so it's it's just a very small scale, uh, fish and chips. If you want to call it joint, you know, just a very small scaled, um, place where you can just grab it real quick, eat it there, or take it with you if you'd like. Um, it has ample parking. Uh, it's a shared parking between other uses. Uh, there is a barber shop, um, another small restaurant um, on site um, in another building, but right on the parcel, uh, as well as, uh, Mr. Song's Fish Market. Um, I think it would be a great addition to the area. I don't feel that. I think it's it fits in 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 the district. Um, it's just pretty straightforward. It's just a matter of formality or regulations. When it was written, just allowed, you know, these kind of uses to just have to go through a special permit process. Um, he did submit his hours of operation. Uh, they submitted building permits already, so he is in the works of um, submitting all the required ventilation plan, um, you know, for his deep fryers. Uh, he will have it inspected by our fire marshal. So he has started that process already. And just not to delay what, you know, his opening or his deadline for for wanting to open. Um, so if you have any other questions, obviously, he's gonna need signage and all that, but um, we can work through that administratively here. The site is already developed. And pretty appropriate for the site.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, is there anyone out there in the audience with any questions regarding this application?
There is one hand raised. One moment.
Okay.
Uh, we have a Michael Johnson.
Is he promoted?
I I promoted him. Our computer's a little slow.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Johnson. Check me on.
I think that was from the previous application.
Oh, was he?
Might have been because I think they did just drop off.
No, he's there. He's there.
No.
Yes.
Can you hear us?
No, I'm sorry.
I can. Yes. Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I was, uh, my name is Michael Johnson. I'm the designer that's been working with Mr. Song to open his place. And I thought maybe I could be of any assistance with any with any technical question they may have had with the with the process. It's a pretty small restaurant, but it, I think it's a great addition to and has a
Okay.
Yes.
Unfortunately, Mr. Johnson, um, Michael.
Yes.
Will, if we have any questions, you're here to answer the questions, not to ask.
Correct. Yes, that's right.
We'll we'll keep you promoted. Uh, when we need you and
Okay.
If anyone else out there with their hand up for questions.
No, but I I wanted to add this one more thing. Um, I don't I don't believe Mr. Song, um, submitted a waste disposal plan. Did you submit that, Mr. Song? I know you're you're gonna be frying fish, so just wanted to make sure that um, and also with the oil.
It's in the, I my plan include that, uh, um, I gave you the document.
Um.
Waste of this person for them. I told me to need the two pages. Yeah. Um, I gave you this document, the two pages to waste this person for them. So I made a plan all separately, you know, the oil and the tools and then, uh, the documentation and the regular inspection.
But where is it being disposed? Are are you disposing, um, you know?
Now, for the 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 waste, um, I'm gonna hire USA Howling uh, and the recycling company and then, uh, uh, for the oil, I'm gonna also hire some other, uh, the special company to recycle the the oil.
Right. How often is it is it gonna sit out there? But I'm, I mean, you're gonna, how often are they gonna come to the site?
Um, for the the waste, three times a week. And then for the oil, I, uh, I think the their plan is two twice a week.
Okay.
I I didn't see any documentation regarding that. Um, okay, um, is there, was there any other hands up out there for any questions or do we just go to the commission now?
Don't see any other hands.
Okay, we'll start at the top. Uh, Commissioner Millet, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Uh, Commissioner Goff, any questions?
Uh, I had, I just have two. Um, I went out and looked at the site. Um, I think, Mr. Song, you said this is, you said initially this was gonna be takeout, but I think, um, uh, Ms. Loreno, uh, said that it's gonna have a small restaurant, which is seems to be what the the picture is showing with, I guess, three tables in the front. So what is this is? You do anticipate having some sit in traffic at the restaurant, although I imagine a lot of people will get fish and chips to go. So is that correct?
Just tables only, no chairs. So no customer sitting over there, just in case if someone has no place to eat, then they can eat there standing. Then otherwise, the mainly they can take it out.
Right, right. Okay, okay. Um, so my just one clarification, since you are gonna be allowing some eating potentially in the in the, uh, in the in the store, and I realize you're not doing a lot of that. Will customers who come in and do eat in the front of the building, will they have access to the restroom in the back? Because when I was looking at the plan, it did not appear, I I it was unclear to me how the only restroom facility is back across from, uh, back in the corner away from the kitchen. So how is that all work?
This is just for the just only for the the employees only, not for customers. And then the basically, the base concept is just takeout. This is the basic. And then the table is, I don't think that anyone who are using, so it's just the takeout concept and then uh, no restroom, uh, for the customers. Because in a too small area, seven hundred and twenty square feet. So and then, uh, if you say the beginning of the, I'm gonna put some tables in the church, so that the customer can eat today, but the basically takeout is the base concept.
Okay, so I I just, I guess I want to make sure that, you know, if it's not strictly takeout, that what you're planning and the access to the restrooms and so forth is allowed under Connecticut law and and, you know, so forth. So I I think that's a question for the planner. I I, you know, or, you know, uh, I just want to make sure that that is all official, you know, it's all okay. Thank you.
Um, it was brought up to the, uh, our building official, and I believe that they were working together, uh, with the applicant on that. He should, he showed them the concept plan and what they were doing. Um, I believe, Mr. Song, uh, you spoke to, uh, one of our assistant building official, correct? They looked at the plans preliminary and gave you some suggestions.
Yes.
Okay, and based on that, you know, you came up with with the drawing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they they have reviewed his plans preliminary, whether they're gonna make changes or not. Um, that would be something he'd have to comply with, with the building code.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Ina, any questions?
Uh, no question at this time. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner James, any questions?
No question.
Okay. Commissioner Bolton, any questions?
Mr. Chair, no questions. Thank you.
Welcome back. Uh, Commissioner Hussein, any questions?
Yes, um, would you be frying plant and chips also? I would.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like plant and chips more. Good.
Hey, uh, Commissioner Marshall Neely, any questions? Okay. Um, and I don't have any questions either. Um, we can move on to comments. Is there anyone out there with their hands up for any comments? Okay, seeing none. Um, we'll start with Commissioner Millet. Any comments?
No comments.
Uh, Commissioner Goff?
No comments.
Commissioner Ina?
No comment.
Commissioner James?
I am very excited, uh, about this new use of space, and I wish you luck in, uh, your business endeavors.
Thank you so much. One day, please.
Uh, Commissioner Hussein, any comments?
Well, same thing. Good luck on the new business venture. Thank you. No comments.
Commissioner Bolton?
I know, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Marshall Neely, in case you're back. Okay, um, and my only comment is, uh, I'll echo Commissioner James. Uh, upon approval, I wish you the best of luck. And, uh, I know there's a lot of people that would love to have a seafood restaurant in town. And even though this is not a full blown seafood restaurant, I guess, you know, starting with fish and chips is not a bad deal. So, uh, that's that's all I have to add to this. Uh, is there anything else that you would like to say before we, uh, close this out, close this public hearing?
Nope.
Oh, you, yeah. Ill, ill, is there anything else you like to say? Or Michael, now, if you want to make any comments, anything else you like to say?
No, I just appreciate, uh, being able to have be here and represent for Mr. Song and I'm going to wish him well as well. We were gonna work on the design to accommodate anything the, uh, the town, uh, building officials would like us to do. We've already got some things in the works.
Okay, great. With that said, the chair entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
To move.
Back in. Been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye. This point, chair entertain a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion for us to approve the special permit application per section four point five point D, point four, point K for principal uses and structures to allow a restaurant use at ten twenty seven Blue Hills Avenue, Unit B, AKA ten twenty five Blue Hills Avenue, per the assessor's card. The applicant is Ilme Song and the owner is C H D Associates LLC.
Thank you so much.
There's second.
Sorry.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Secretary, the next item on the agenda is also a public hearing. If you would read the legal notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Make sure I'm not muted. I'm not. Okay, great. Um, legal notice for the town of Bloomfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Petition by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for a tax amendment to Bloomfield Zone and Regulations seven point one seven recreational and medical cannabis cultivation sale for proposed moratorium to recreational medical cannabis cultivation and sale uses in Bloomfield, Connecticut. The applications are available for review at the town of Bloomfield's website and the Land Use Office located at eight hundred Bloomfield Avenue, Bloomfield, Connecticut.
Okay, uh, Jonathan? You you muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is the text amendment to, um,
What is it?
Establish a moratorium for, uh, cannabis.
Excuse me, can can you mute him? Ill, ill, can you mute yourself?
They can, they can remove them.
Remove him.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Can you? Linda? Okay. All right, thank you. I'm sorry, uh, Jonathan?
Um, this is the, uh, this is a proposed tax amendment to section seventeen, seven point seventeen point one point A. Creates a moratorium on the, uh, on the retail sale and the cultivation of cannabis regulations. Uh, it would be, it would go last until November one, twenty twenty four. Uh, if you would improve it, um, it would be effective on April fifteenth of twenty twenty four. And, uh, it would allow the commission, basically, six months to, uh, to consider what, uh, action they want to do regarding cannabis and where they would like it located in in town, particularly in the retail side. And you'll hopefully have by then the benefit of the new P O C D, uh, which you can use to help the guidelines. If you do decide to, um, approve this, uh, you will have to state your reasons. Um, and my suggestion is the reason is that you want to analyze the impact of of these regulations on the community and, uh, their conformity with the new P O C D. And you do have to set the effective date, uh, which would be uh, April fifteenth, twenty twenty four, which allows for the appropriate prepublication and all of that. And obviously, the staff, uh, recommends that you do it, and it's carrying out basically a decision you made at your last committee commission meeting.
Okay. Well, with that said, is, uh, there anyone out there in the audience with any questions regarding this application?
I do not see any hands.
Okay, we'll start with the commission. Uh, we'll start at the bottom this time. Uh, Commissioner Marshall Neely, any questions regarding this application, the tax amendment?
Um, I I don't have any questions right now. I'm gonna kind of hold off.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Bolton?
Uh, um, uh, Director Coleman, when did you say? I didn't hear. When did you say the effective they should be? Was it the fifteenth of April?
April fifteen.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Hussein?
No questions, just comments later. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner James?
Is this for all kind of applicant types or? Is this for all kind of applicant types or?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Uh Commissioner Mallett. Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Golf?
No questions.
Commissioner Ina?
No question.
And I don't have any questions either. Uh we can go to comments now. Any hands out there for comments?
I do not see any.
Okay, we'll start with uh Mister Mallett. Any comments?
Uh. Uh I think it it's fine a- as put forward. It'll just make it easier to just pause the whole section um. And I I agree with the proposed reasons as well, just with the upcoming. Uh P O C D, we have a. An idea of. How we want this to fit into the community and our land use.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Ina, any questions? I'm I'm sorry, any comment?
Right, I think we had also mentioned about um developing regulations. Uh during this period of time, uh we're working on working on that. Regulation pertaining to cannabis.
Uh ye- yes, we'll we'll be trying to figure the whole all that out during this time.
There are regulations in place. We just would probably come, I mean, amend it or review it as. It pertains to the P O C D's recommendation.
Right. We'll 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 get that all figured out over the six-month period.
Okay, thank you.
Um Miss Commissioner Neely, Marshall Neely, any comments?
I I'm a little. I'm a little behind in the times on this because I'm, my comment is I'm not sure that after the six months is. Period is up. Are we required to, this not a question, don't answer it like it's a question. This is me talking out loud. To make this thing happen and I don't know that I'm prepared to. Um help make this thing go through, but I do think the moratorium is good, especially with um, you know, the six months. From April, what was that, April fourteen fif- fifteenth or something like that, so. I'm going to just hold on to my comments until we meet again.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, uh Commissioner Hussein, any comments?
I'm kind of the, and I'm on the flip side. I I I'm I'm fine with the more team in the cultivation because we already approved two. And um we don't know what's gonna happen yet, based on what's, you know, what's, what what we what we approved on their pretty large facilities. I um I am not sure on the sales side because we haven't done it yet and I'm a little, I was worried that we told an applicant that. You should find another location and come back. Now we put a moratorium on the sales side, so that applicant now is probably no longer. Probably Bloomfield is not viable for them anymore because they're probably not gonna wait till November, you know, for and to move forward in application, so. I was concerned about the sales part of it because previously the same night we told folks that. Come back to us with a different location, but I do also understand that we are waiting for guidance in the P O C D, so. I am hesitant to move forward with the call. I am, I'm fine moving forward to the cultivation side and but I I'm not a hundred percent sure on the sales side. But um I understand why we're doing it, so thanks.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner James, any comments?
Yeah, um the only comment I have is um since we have a timeline for the P C O D. Um and a timeline for this moratorium, I I guess it's just on us to um really work on pushing for those regulations. I I guess. With how our meetings have been going, they've been full that we haven't had a time to really discuss any planning or. Any updates to our regulations, so um I I mean, I guess I'm just trying to be mindful of when we would actually. Um do that and as opposed to just the six months coming up and we haven't had any conversations or done any work and that.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Bolton, any comments?
Uh yes, uh thank you, uh Mister Chair. Um you know, we we. I was a part of um the original commission that uh prepared the original regs and. Um we all think and thought that we did a good job and I'm sure. Folks thought that we did, but uh when it came to the sale facility and having it. In the center of town, um that's that hopefully gave everyone that I I grew up in this town, so I'm. On a transplant or anything like that. I I grew up here, vested here. That gave me great pause. Uh I've seen. This town changed dramatically in twenty years, twenty-five, thirty years. I'm blessed. If I'm lucky, I'll be fifty this year. And so it it's 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 important to me that we get this right. Um the 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 this is a phenomenal town. Um the the diversity of this town, um its place in the state and this district. Th- this is a special place and so I I want to make sure that we get this right. It isn't about three percent. It's about protecting um the essence of the history um and also the future of this town. For our for our folks and so. I certainly believe that this tour is uh is essential and uh Commissioner James, you're right, this is not something we should be trying to. You know, fight in the last twenty minutes of a four-hour. Um hearing uh on a on a fourth day. We need to make time. Just to make the the tweaks. I I I think in essence, the spirit of the regs that have been established are fine, but we need to. Tweak some of these uh these nuances and and we certainly should do that outside. A regularly scheduled um monthly meeting, so that's all. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Uh huh, thank you. Uh Commissioner Golf, any comments?
Uh yeah, I'll be very brief. Um I agree, uh I certainly agree with Commissioner James. Uh we have to make time for this. Uh we we've sort of been having that discussion all evening um and it's important that we spend a lot more time on the planning part. Uh I don't think I I agree with Commissioner Bolden. I don't think anyone thought when they created these that these were. You know, that the regulations were problematic, but then when push came to shove. We saw some things that needed to be fixed. Um I want to, uh but I do want to echo. Um Commissioner Hussein, um you know, we have to make time for this and we need to get it done. Um I would. I would be happy if we completed this before we were able to take the moratorium off before the timeline we're we're putting on. Because the goal of this is not to prevent retail sales in in Bloomfield. It's just to make sure that we're putting retail sales where we want them to be. And that it fits in the character of the different districts in the town. Um and finally, um Commissioner Hussein also made the comment. That we had two, we already have two cultivation centers. Um I think one of the things we need to examine when we look at these regulations is how many of any of this do we want? Um you know, and I think I said this at the time, we talked about the cannabis shop, uh the cannabis retail application. You need, you need to have some limits on these things in terms of scale. We probably have too many liquor stores in this town. Uh we certainly, you know, I think some people agree we have too many auto parts stores in one section of town and it it does, it it. It's not that auto parts stores are bad, but it crowds out other things. So I think we need to look at this in the context of. Maybe two cultivation centers is enough and we don't need to do anymore. Uh maybe one retail sa- sales place is correct. We need to look at that as we're doing this and I know that um, you know, I know that that's something the town council. When they talked about this at their governance subcommittee also mentioned with respect to our regulations, so um. Um I'm in support of this, but I think we should try to get it done so that we can move on. Thank you.
Okay, and uh my comments would be I also support the tax amendment. Um and and I guess I'll just say uh to Jonathan, um we can set a date now of. Expiring November fifteenth, but in the event that we was to get our. Uh regulations updated prior to that, is there any reason why we couldn't go back and alter that date? To say, okay, we're we're ready to go?
You can either shorten it or extend.
Okay, all right, so then we're not locked into that that date, so. So it's incumbent upon us that the sooner the better, if 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 we're looking for a quick fix. Okay.
Also potentially visiting one of the sales center. Maybe look and call us after or something, or even try in the sample. No kidding.
You probably already have.
Okay.
I think West Hartford, they have a couple um retail stores. I was told I haven't been, but.
Had an article in the paper about theirs.
I think honestly, if staff can look at maybe some of the best practices in either, not necessarily in Connecticut, but even in in the region. And probably bring some of those best practices amendments to us to to review, said, hey, this is something that works. We can probably even look at that too.
Sure.
And I think that um from my observations around town, they are. Best practices is very varied. Um they are located in town centers. They are located on town peripheries. Um they are located uh in light industrial areas, they're located in in basically completely retail areas, so they're.
That's everywhere.
Yeah, basically, if you if you broaden out the perspective. Um they're located everywhere and talking with the police chief. Um you know, other than the sort of rush that happened when they first opened north of us in Massachusetts. Uh there have been no, no um reports of issues. That basically they have blended in completely with uh their surrounding. Um area, both um uses and the and the physical.
Well, the good thing is we're trying to find the best place for them to be here. And so that's um, you know, that's, that's, that's a good thing. So with that said, um we'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing. So. Been moved and second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye. Uh we'll now entertain a motion on this application.
All right, I'll make a motion for us to um approve the tech, the tax amendment. To the town of Bloomfield's zoning regulations, section seven point one seven for recreation and medical cannabis cultivation and sale for a proposed moratorium to. To the recreational and medical cannabis cultivation and sales in the use, uses in Bloomfield, Connecticut.
Commissioner, could you add that um?
Effective April fifteenth.
It would be effective April fifteenth.
Twenty twenty-four to November, November.
In in compatibility with with the uh P O C D.
Right, November, what date we said, November?
November first.
November first or sooner and compatible with the P O C D.
Right.
Your second?
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda is under new business. And uh I'll ask.
How about two C?
You got two B, six B.
Two C, two C.
Two C.
Eleven twenty-four Blue Hills Avenue.
Two, two C?
Oh, this may be the before the revised agenda.
Oh. Yeah, we have to do B, we have to do B and C for uh the new business.
Six B and C.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
Yeah, we got, we got twenty minutes. Let's go.
Okay. Okay, we're on B, under new business. And I'm gonna ask the secretary if he would read the application. It's not a legal notice. But you can read the application.
I was muted, sorry. Can reads um under new business, revised site plan application at one thirty-two West Dudley Town Road for an outdoor parking lot. Expansion from forty-nine total parking spaces, nine driver employee spaces and forty bus spaces. To a hundred and fifty-five total parking spaces, which is seventy-two driver employee, three handicap and eighty-three bus spaces. Applicant is that that Co Inc., owner K A D Bloomfield Realty LLC.
Uh yes, I'm going. As we speak.
Uh good evening. Uh for the record, Brian Panico here with Cole Civil Survey, previously Harry Colson on behalf of that Co. Um I'll make it short and sweet and we're on a time crunch here. Um. So basically, nine point six four acre site uh zoned I two. Uh there's an existing eighty-five hundred square foot vehicle maintenance and office building uh on the property. This is a Daco bus facility. Um the property, uh the proposal is to expand the bus yard uh for some additional parking spaces. Um that's sixty-three additional employee spaces for a total of seventy-two spaces in forty-three additional. Uh bus spaces uh for a total of eighty-three um bus spaces, which brings our parking count up to a hundred and fifty-five spaces. Um. I can share, just gonna share my screen just so we can, if that's possible. Okay. Um so the this is the existing site. This is the building you were talking about, the current bus. Uh parking area, uh maintenance area back here with some employee parking spaces. Um and so our proposal is to basically expand um the bus parking uh throughout this entire back portion. And by expanding the bus parking, we also need to provide uh spaces for employee parking or driving those buses as well. Um from a stormwater runoff perspective uh and uh. Environment, uh environmental protection perspective, we have proposed a couple of sand filter pre-treatment areas. For all of the runoff, all the runoff is directed to those. Uh then goes into a large bio swale, uh which runs north to south along the entire. Uh edge of the edge of the pavement um in the site and. Essentially, as that water flows off the site, first has to go into those bio sand filters, then over uh overflows in through a piping system. Um to that bio filter, uh from there, uh would fill that bio filter and then. Um overflow and infiltrate back down uh to the wetlands to the east. Um the overall uh site um is sized uh to accommodate. Uh all the all the water runoff for the hundred-year storm, thirty-five percent of the water quality. Uh volume is stored in those pre-treatment basins, um and then another seventy-eight percent of the required total site water quality volume is stored at the bio swale. So we're storing over a hundred percent of the required water quality volume. Uh and overall, this design, uh we feel is the was the best uh management practices to provide both L I D. Uh and protection to the wetland and neighboring downstream properties. Um I'll also note um that as part of uh Daco's current plan, they do report runoff uh quality. Um and do testing for D E P. Uh so again, this is, this would just continue. Uh with that would continue and this would just be update, an update to their uh current uh control plan. Um and then obviously within the building itself, there's all of the required and necessary spill kits required by D E P, so any. Uh spills or any oils or anything that come off of the buses that need to be cleaned up are already, there's already plans in place to accommodate for all of that. Um so again, this is an existing bus storage facility, um and we are just proposing to expand the parking and expand the uh. The facility uh in that regard. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you. Uh if you can stop sharing the screen, that would be helpful. Uh Jonathan?
Again, it's pretty straightforward. Um staff has reviewed it and um we have, it's a permitted use, it's an existing use, it's expanding. Uh the Wetlands agent has signed off on it, the Wetlands commission has signed off on it, um engineering has signed off on it and um. We think it's an, it's an appropriate expansion that meets all of our. We think it's an, it's an appropriate expansion that meets all of our regulations and we would, we would so uh so endorse it.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, we'll take questions from the commission. We'll start with uh Mr. Millet. Commissioner Millet, I'm sorry. Any questions regarding this?
Uh, what is the uh increased footprint of impervious on on the total site? Um, I would have to. Or approximately, there's, or a percent increase?
Um, there's roughly a, one second, I actually have the number here.
Forty four percent.
Yeah, forty, forty percent, forty four.
Okay, we're under fifty, okay. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, Aina, any questions?
No questions, not this time.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Goff, any questions?
Two, two things. Um, could you, could you just go over again? The current size and what you're, I mean, I, I. When you were talking about that, I thought it sounded not as large an ex- increase as what was indicated on the. Um, agenda. The agenda says we're going from forty nine parking spaces to a hundred and fifty five, so an increase of three times. But when you, is, is that correct, or did I mishear what you said when you went through it?
Um, no, so that is uh, that is correct. So a hundred and fifty five total parking spaces. Um, and the basically, we're increasing the number of bus parking spaces by forty three. So we're doubling. The number of bus parking spaces there. Um, and the, the actual employee. Parking, there was a lot of space for employees to park, but not a lot of well, of actually physically defined spaces. Um, so technically, I believe on the planet, really, there was really only like. Eight or twelve parking spaces, existing parking spaces that were defined. However. Uh, all forty of the people who were driving buses, they were driving their vehicles there, getting into a bus and going. Um, so what we basically did was we just formalized all of that parking. So there was a lot of impervious surface. On this site, um, and now what we're going through and doing is formalizing all of these parking areas to show. Where those parking spaces are. So we have sixty three uh new employee parking spaces. Uh, where there were only nine existing shown. So there are seventy two total employee parking spaces and eighty three total bus spaces. So it's a hundred and fifty five total spaces.
But if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that forty nine original. Is actually a deflated number. There was actually impervious surface. That people were parking on that were not just, that were, so instead of nine, there were nine designated spots, but you might have really had twenty five. Is that?
Correct. There, there's, there was enough, there's enough impervious surface and room onset impervious surface. To park well over that number of, of cars, uh, but only a defined nine spaces.
Okay, and again, my other, my other question, very simple, I mean. This bus parking lot serves who? I mean, is these, are these buses used in Bloomfield, in Bloomfield? In surrounding towns? And what's, what's generating the increase of number of buses at this site?
Um, that I am not a hundred percent familiar with. I know that generally speaking, Daco is a multitude of facilities. We've done a number of these facilities. Uh, all over the state. Um, so my, so these buses that are specifically parked in the Bloomfield location. Are serving Bloomfield and neighboring and directly neighboring towns. Um, they also have a large site in New Britain, another large site in Middletown. Um, just to name a couple. Uh, so the, my best uh assessment of this would be. This is the location that's centrally serving uh those strategically placed towns and the increase in the number of. Buses is just to try to kind of centralize and focus. You know, if we can park double the number of buses here, instead of them having to come out of New Britain to serve neighboring towns. Of Bloomfield, now we can, you know, do it more efficiently.
Great, thank you.
Okay, uh, next, uh, Commissioner Bolton, any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Uh, Commissioner Hussein, any questions?
Yeah, um, have you done the truck traffic at level of service under two intersections? What's this, what's the level of service is gonna be? Once you add all this additional, not only truck, but the, just the traffic in the pinhole?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, I would have to look that information up for you.
I know what studied on was pretty busy. I just wanna see if, I mean, I know if it's not gonna service Bloomfield, if they're gonna come back down. I know there's been concerns of coming down back down, what's that they're all around and then some of them cut through, but if they're servicing Bloomfield, that's fine, like school street and stuff like that, so. And um, I was gonna say too, I think. We're gonna go touch on it, but the only question I had to is um, do you guys do outreach in Bloomfield though for drivers? If you're adding all these new drivers, I'm just curious.
Um, so I don't actually work directly for Daco. We're the engineering firm that designed the plans and does all that. I know. Um. I know that they are always hiring, um, so I'm sure that the, um, I'm sure I can talk to the owner and.
The applicant is not.
No, I don't believe he's on, no.
Okay.
We, we, we do have uh, the app, a representative up. He's, he's coming on now. I just promoted him to panelists.
Oh, great, thank you.
Um, Berlundy.
He's on, he's on, he's, he needs unmute.
Tom, can you tell us what the um, the majority of the buses where they service in and then potentially if there's any outreach in Bloomfield for local hiring?
Uh, I'm not sure about the local hiring, but pretty much all the buses there are, are Bloomfield uh buses and vans. Either for Creck or, or Bloomfield, uh, the town of Bloomfield.
Okay. You, you, do you know about the level of service of the, what the traffic is gonna affect, what this is gonna do for West Dudley Town Road? Or have you guys done, haven't done any studies in that? The Bloomfield.
Yeah, not, I don't know that, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that we've done any studies and I think that basically, um. If I had to, you know, best judgment is that. The increase in the number of buses that are actually getting stored here isn't necessarily changing the amount of buses that. Uh, Daco is putting on the road in Bloomfield. It's more or less just their ability to. Instead of having to take these buses into Bloomfield, uh. Perform their uh service for the day and then move them back to uh New Britain or uh Middletown or another neighboring town. Um, they're basically able to just park them here instead, so. Uh, but they do do a lot of this is also the, the location where they do their fueling. So any buses that are. Uh, coming in from other locations uh into Bloomfield. Would most likely be fueling at this location as needed, so the, those buses in that traffic is probably already on these roads.
The um, there's no traffic like there, I don't think. So I, I'd say I don't have a problem. I guess we'll approve it, but I'd like to, and I, one of my conditions would have, you know. Coordinate with staff to make sure that the, the level of service doesn't worsen. Or we have some sort of queue that doesn't build up there that affects our residents or the other users in that area.
Right, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Commissioner James, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just knew Commissioner Goff was gonna ask about, well, I thought I asked about trees. I guess I'm curious. Um, did you consider, are, is, are there any plans to remove any trees? Do you know of our uh kind of regulations on uh trees?
Uh, so we dealt pretty in depth with this um with Wetlands. Um, we have a. Um, the entire front uh portion of the property is actually staying as is. Um, so none of the trees in the front yard uh are being removed, none of the trees. Uh, well, effectively no trees that are uh. Note, there was a large number of trees that had already been removed from the site. And so as part of the Wetlands approval, we had, we'd done a remediation plan. Um, which involves planting quite a few additional, quite a few trees back on the property amongst other plantings. Um, but in, as far as the trees in the front yard, trees within the side yards, uh, most of those are, are remaining as, and long as they're in good condition.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, I don't have any questions. Um, we can go to comments. Um, we'll start with Commissioner Bolton, any comments?
No comments, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Uh huh, uh, Commissioner Hussein, any comments?
No comments, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner James, any comments?
No comments, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Marshall Neely, any comments?
Oh, I, I, I'm concerned about the roads with all of that, uh, all of those buses. Coming in and the roads around West Dudley Town Road, you know, um, that area. You, I don't know whether or not the um, the roads are built to um. Accommodate all of that heavy equipment every day or however many days, but I'm just concerned about the neighbors and. Or, or other businesses and what that amount of um. Buses can do to the roads in, in the area in Bloomfield, and it's very expensive to, to repair those. So that was just. My uh contribution to this and that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Goff, any comments?
Um, yes, I'll just piggyback on Commissioner James and thank you for bringing up the tree question. Uh, but we do want to make sure that um, the applicant does understand that we do have a new replacement ordinance. It sounds like in this case. The uh, any uh. Trees that are being taken down, the remediation has already been discussed at Wetlands, but you, we do need to make sure that you follow. You know, since this is a permitted activity, uh, that you do need to follow that in terms of the amount of planning. So um. You know, make sure that the um, staff gets you that uh, that uh information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Aina, any comments?
No comments.
Uh, Commissioner Millet, any comments?
Uh, I guess the only comment I would have is, you know, in, in general, yes, the West Dudley Town is not in the great. Shape, although I would say this particular site is much, much closer to the Blue Hill side. Um, and so it, and it's also a bus versus an eighteen wheeler. So the amount of traffic generation and uh. Where on the road, I would think would be far less and impactful to the, to the neighbors. In, in general, I don't have an issue with this.
Okay, and uh, my comments would be similar. I don't have an issue, um. And I'll just leave it as that. So at this point. Um, the commission will decide, and this is not a public hearing. So the commission will decide what they like to do with this application, so we'll entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make the motion to revise, no, which is this part B, right? I'll make a motion of us to approve the revised site plan application at one thirty two West Dudley Town Road for an outdoor parking lot expansion from forty nine total parking spaces. Which is nine driver employee spaces and forty bus spaces to one hundred and fifty five total parking spaces. Which would be seventy two driver employee spaces, three handicap spaces and eighty three bus spaces. The applicant is Daco. And the owner is K A D Bloomfield Realty LLC.
Your second. Been moved in second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Um.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um. Uh, I, you know, I, I, I will support the motion, but I think uh, it was Commissioner Hussein who made the comment that there, a condition needs to be placed on this. That um, some kind of traffic analysis is done to make sure this does not in any way decrease the level of service at the intersections.
Yes, thank you. I apologize. I forgot my own condition.
So, so I would like to, I would like to uh add, suggest as a friendly amendment?
I, yes, I do accept that and, and I, I make the motion still.
Excuse me, who's second, please? I think Commissioner Millet, I believe. And you accepted friendly amendment? Commissioner Hussein?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on this application? Uh, yes, Commissioner Aina.
How about the issue that um Commissioner Marshall McNevy. Raised about uh impact on the road?
Um, I think, I think part of um his friendly amendment was gonna do a study. A traffic study on the road, uh. I'm not sure in terms of wear and tear, but I think they are gonna do a, a, a study on the uh traffic flow.
Yeah, the pavement management part may have to come from the town. I don't think that the, the level of service and traffic is gonna be just the traffic and level of service, not the pavement management.
Right.
The um, Department of Public Works has funds to undertake a. A um, a redesign, not necessarily a reconstruct, but a redesign of West Dudley Town Road. In this coming fiscal year with a view to um. Improving the road the following fiscal year. So that is already on the list of capital improvements to move forward. Um, by the town department of public work.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of uh approving this, this motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, chair vote aye, uh, motion carries. Okay, actually, we're like right at that eleven o'clock time. Uh, we have this last application. If you guys want to um.
Get out of the way.
Get out of the way.
Okay, under uh, um, Mr. Secretary, under new business.
Yeah, under. Yeah, Part C, non-conforming use change determination on eleven twenty four Blue Hills Avenue. From an art gallery cafe shop coffee to a nonprofit business organization provided in community outreach services within the greater Hartford area. The applicant and owner is the Rondell, um, I'm, I do apologize, the Pertler. LLC in care of Leola J. McCrory.
Okay, thank you. Um, John, is anyone here for that?
Um, and it's my understanding that the applicant is not, was not able to be present and staff would recommend that you table the matter.
Okay, perfect. Uh, the, the chair entertained a motion to table this application. Next, I'm sorry, next meeting.
Okay, I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, table it to what date is that?
Uh, April, April eighth, uh, uh, well, the next meeting is April eighteenth.
Or a special meeting to address anything outside of.
As long as Dunkster is first, if there's special meeting, we can say as long as everyone.
Well, actually, Dunkster is gonna be the eighteenth. We haven't set a date for the special meeting. That's what we need to do and when we get to old business. We need to set a date on where we, what date we're gonna hear, the, the ones that we were gonna hear on the eighteenth. We need a special date now to hear that, cuz we've moved Dunkster to the eighteenth.
What date would this be moved to? I'm sorry?
Um, well, the next meeting is the eighteenth.
Well, we could set a next meeting, it could, could be a special meeting, which could be on the eight, the eleventh also.
Right, you could do a special meeting on the eleventh. It was the app, it was the Dunkster applicant that was not available.
Right. Well, we can, we can put it on the agenda, well, well, yeah, we can. Well, let's just say this, let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting and then when we get into old business, let's just set. Our next meeting is April eleventh.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um. All right, so we, we did, we, we uh, we already approved.
No, I think we called the question, right? Did we call the question?
I, sorry, I, I think the uh zone change and for three ninety one. Simsberry Road and Watkins Road was continued to April eighteenth.
No, it's, it's the next meeting. They didn't set a date.
Our next regular meeting, okay.
We'll figure that one out.
All right, so we're, we're gonna continue this to the next meeting. We'll say that and then we'll, we'll set a date for the special meeting in our next old business. So all those in favor of uh. Hearing this application at our next meeting signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, chair vote aye. Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye.
Just. To clarify though, um, and Linda might have made a great point, I think we, we might have said next meeting as in the eighteenth, so if you can let them know Linda, we may have them in a special meeting on the eleventh, and if that works for them.
We'll let them.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to notify everybody who was gonna be on the eighteenth. Um, next item is old business, so under this, we can set that date. For the special meeting.
We need a motion to do that.
Right, is that, is that date good for everybody?
Yeah, love it, yes. I think so.
Say it again, which? September the eleventh would be the date for the special meeting and what we'll be, we'll be hearing all the.
None of that, none of that.
For the eighteenth, we'll be hearing those on the eleventh and we're gonna do Doncaster only on the eighteenth.
Of April, verification, you said September?
So, yeah, I'll make a motion to um have a special meet in April eleven, twenty twenty-four, um, for any nun Doncaster applications.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Been moved in second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye. Uh, any staff reports or anything, quick, Jonathan?
Uh, no.
Chair entertain a motion?
Just one, one quick question, Jonathan, if, when is our, when is our deputy town engineer gonna be back?
Um, the town has, um, it's, it is my understanding that the town has made an offer and it has been accepted for a permanent um. New town engineer. And that that individual should be beginning, joining the, joining the uh, the team in early May.
Okay.
And that the uh, the deputy town engineer should be back, I think in the end of this, the end of April. He is on.
The reason I ask Peter is overwhelmed, but I know he's also a wetlands guy or wetlands agent, so I know, I just don't wanna overwhelm them and, you know, having them the double do, duties. So, I just wanna make sure, thanks.
Well, we're all running shorthanded right now.
Yeah.
Well, keep up the good work, appreciate it.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you all.
Yeah, uh, chair entertain a motion.
Move we adjourn?
Yes, thank you.
Like.
Okay, guys, have a nice evening, oh, have a nice.
Have a nice Easter.
Exactly, happy Easter, everybody. Bye, see you on the eleven. Yes.
The next month.